Good evening and pardon our little delay. We've had a few logistical problems to iron out. Welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Board on October 7th, 2021. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2021 resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2021 through January 2022. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 22nd, 2021. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 25th, 2021 edition of Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note, the members of the public will have an opportunity at specific points in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment should virtually raise your hand, use Raise Hand button at the center of the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity or hate speech, or that relate to matters that are not before the Board, will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Jack, you're on mute.
Why does that happen every week? One day I'll learn. It's a really technically challenging issue, isn't it? Here, I'm here.
Jack, you can use the space bar to unmute temporarily.
Thank you, Bill.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a call.
Great, thank you. Announcements? Any, anyone have announcements this evening? Any Board members or staff? Seeing none, I don't have any either, believe it or not.
Well, other than, other than the change in the agenda, do you want to?
Oh, we did send around, Carrie sent around a note earlier today. With the revised agenda, we just flipped the, we rearranged agenda items so that we would hear, so that we would do the hearing on the Franklin Avenue redevelopment area designation earlier rather than later, since there are so many folks have a keen interest in that, and it didn't make sense to make them sit through what might have taken a good bit of time before, so. So the agenda will, will look at minutes, we will look at the landmark resolution, handle quickly the carrying of the land win development application to December, and then quickly go into the discussion of the redevelopment area before dealing with the ordinance referrals from council. So, minutes of November 5th, 2020, regular meeting. Anybody have questions or edits that they haven't yet sent to Carrie?
I found two, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I repeated, I repeated your name and Ms. Sacks's name on page one under Attendees Present, so I will fix that.
Skipped right over that. There was a sentence late, toward the end of the minutes, that needed clarification and, and contained an extra word or something, and Carrie looked that up and corrected it, so. There are no other edits. Would someone like to move the minutes?
They'll move.
Mr. McGowan moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Quinn seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or raise your hand. All opposed or abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Resolution, we have a resolution for the landmark at Princeton. Application, this was preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan on Snowden Lane, Block 4502, Lot 5, file number P 2018-607P/SPF. Any comments or? Anything about this resolution? Normally. Mr. Muller, you know, might say a word or two, but he's joining the meeting later on because he didn't need to be here for the first part of the meeting, but of course, his office prepared the resolution, and as far as I could tell, everything was in order. So if there are no questions specific to this, would someone like to move and second this resolution?
I'll move.
Mr. Quinn moved it. Mr. Cohen seconds. Roll call, please, Carrie.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is land win development, and we are carrying this to December 2nd, 2021. I believe the, either the attorney or some of the professionals could not be here tonight on behalf of Land Win. So, this is a preliminary and final major subdivision at 725 and 823 Harrington Road, and 915 Mount Lucas Road, Block 1001, lots 1, 2, and 14. And this agenda item is hereby carried to the December 2nd, 2021 regular meeting of the Planning Board, which will start at 7:00 PM, and. Is there anything else? Mr. Regan, I hate to put you on the spot, but since you're an attorney, when we're carrying an item, is there anything else that I need to say or we need to do?
Other than, just.
No further notices?
Yeah, exactly. Yep, no further notice will be provided with respect to the application.
Right, okay.
Madam Chair, if I might, I, I don't know quite, I, I expected Land Win's attorneys to be here tonight, but there is a desire by new members of the Board who have joined since this application was first landed on our collective dais back in 2019. For the new members to tour the site, the way other members who have since left the Board or are recusing had the opportunity to do. So, I was wondering how to proceed, whether, who would make that ask of Mr. Letizia's office?
I'm sorry, I should have done that, so I will address that, Tim.
Okay, I mean, obviously, we'd like to get out there before it gets too cold and wet. And I know that it, it took quite a lot of doing the last time, so.
One or two meetings, tours. We had two.
I, I think we had two because they're, well, let's try for one.
Yeah.
I would try for. Myself, right?
Thank you, sorry.
And I think, Mr. O'Donnell as well is new, and I think he expressed an interest in, and I would, I would like to join my colleagues and go out there again. Mr. Cohen, did you get a chance to tour as part of this?
I did, I did.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to make sure that those new members do realize that there's a long, long record that they will have to familiarize themselves with if they want to participate.
They've been, they've been very brave in, in, in recognizing that and agreeing to move forward, so.
I wouldn't do it if I were you, but. God bless me.
I would.
There's a choice.
I'm going to say even more daunting than the long record are the ticks and that property, and I strongly advise wearing the equivalent of a burka if you go there to, to, to visit the site. And Tim, I can't believe that you're re-upping for that again. You must be very narcissistic.
I, I'm, you know, I, I think for the benefit of the, the new members, it might be good to have someone who's been down that, down those paths before, so.
Well, and there is an insect repellent made with picoridin, which is not a nerve agent and will not affect your grandchildren, if you're still, still young enough to bear children. Sorry. Anyway, I would recommend putting, putting on repellent before you go, because it's, it is. It's, it's some, it's some thick woods and underbrush and stuff, and you may have to, no.
It's an adventure.
Wade through things.
Mr. Chow is a, is a noted wilderness expert, and. He's been seen in Harrington Woods many times, so.
Okay, good. Thank you, Carrie, for, for setting that up. So that meeting is carried to the December 2nd, no further notice will be provided, 7 o'clock. And members of the public wishing to attend can click on the link that will be in the agenda for that evening, posted on the municipal website. Okay, so next up is the discussion and a public hearing to determine whether certain real property located at 1-10 Franklin Avenue, and specifically designated as lots 2, 26, and 27, in Block 2104 on the tax map of Princeton, the study area, or a portion thereof, meets the requirements for and should be designated under the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 40A:12A-1 at SEC, as a non-condemnation redevelopment area. Mr. Regan, do you want to set the table a little bit, and then you two, Mr. Place, if you, La Place, if you have anything to add?
I, yes, and I just, for purposes of, of, you know, advising the Board as well as the public, as the Chairwoman just read, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to, for this Board to, to hear a report prepared by Higher Grule on whether the, the properties identified qualify as an area in need of redevelopment, and thus make a recommendation to the governing body who would ultimately make that determination. But I wanted to just focus everyone that, you know, any questions and comments with regards to, to this matter should really be focused on the testimony and report, well, the testimony that's going to be provided by a planner, and the report that she prepared and submitted to the Board with, with regards to this hearing. I know people get, want to, want to know what, how this site's going to be redeveloped, when it's going to be redeveloped. Those are questions that, that ultimately will be dealt with by this Board as well as the governing body, but they're, they're not really appropriate for discussion this evening. Again, it should just be focused on, on the task at hand is whether these properties, in your opinion, qualify as an area in need of redevelopment. As many of you probably already know, these properties are part of the Affordable Housing Settlement that Princeton has, and there are certain timeframes in which the project has to be, has to proceed. So this is the first step in the redevelopment process. There is also an agreement with a developer with respect to the development of these properties, and that agreement contemplated the use of redevelopment to facilitate this project. There, there is an ordinance already in effect, an Affordable Housing Overlay, that again was adopted in furtherance of the Affordable Housing Settlement, but already has the zoning in place in terms of what should be developed there, and the densities that would be permitted for that development. So those decisions have already been made. So again, the, the focus of, of tonight's hearing should be, you know, just on, on the report and testimony tonight. So that's all I have to say. If anybody has any questions.
Okay, thank you. And Michael, do you have anything to add before we hear from Higher Grule?
Um, thank you, Chair. I have nothing really to add at this time. I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll let our consultant planner go ahead and make the presentation, and then I'll add anything as, as we go along.
Great. So Ms. Mertz, do I, I take it that you will present your work?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and it's great to be here with you and the Board. Mr. Regan, did you want to swear me in?
Yep, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony about to give this evening is the truth?
I do.
Okay. If you could just, for the record, your name, who you're employed by, and your purpose this evening?
Sure. My name is McKinley Mertz. I'm a principal planner at Higher Grule and Associates. We're a community planning firm out of Red Bank. I have a PP license, a professional planners license here in New Jersey. I'm also certified under the National Certification under the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a bachelor's degree in architecture and a master's degree in city and regional planning, the master's degree being from Rutgers. I've been practicing for about six years and licensed for about three and a half. And I'm here tonight to present the study for the Franklin Avenue redevelopment area. I've presented studies in other communities throughout the state and prepared dozens of, I've been part of teams preparing dozens of different studies and plans, and I'm quite familiar with the process.
You were involved in preparing the report that was submitted to the Board and that you're going to be presenting this evening?
Correct.
Okay. I, I think she can proceed, Chairwoman.
Yes, welcome. Go right ahead, McKinley.
Thank you. If you guys are okay, I'm going to share my screen. I took components of my study and just put them into a presentation form so that it would be a little bit easier to see. There's nothing new being presented, it's just structured a little bit differently. So if, if that's all right with you, just give me one second to find. Does everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just going to put into. Okay, so this is the cover of the plan that was submitted to you. The date is August 13th, 2021. Of course, we are here tonight on October 7th. The purpose of this plan is to review the three lots identified as Lot 2, 26, and 27 in Block 21.04 on the municipality's tax maps, to determine if they qualify for an area in need of redevelopment. In preparation for this study, I conducted two formal site visits. I was there March 12th of this year, where I photographed the properties and viewed them from the outside and from the sidewalk only. I returned on May 21st, where I was accompanied by two employees from the Housing Authority, who, one of them went with me to enter into four different units on lots 26 and 2, two units in each lot. I also happen to have grown up in Princeton and have walked past these properties more times than I can count on my way to and from school, so I have a different familiarity beyond this study with them. This is the study area map that was presented within the report. All three properties within the study are located along Franklin Avenue here, between Witherspoon Street to the west, and Jefferson Road and residential, single-family residential properties to the east. The Avalon at Princeton, the new development, is across the street from Franklin Avenue, the former hospital site. The Princeton Cemetery is located to the rear of the properties. There's a few small residential buildings here, and commercial properties as well, both of these located behind, behind Lot 2. Here's an aerial, just to reiterate what I said, the, you can see the, the large cemetery, as well as some of the commercial properties along Witherspoon Street, the residential properties along Jefferson, as well as across Franklin Avenue from, from the subject property. This is the zoning map, the existing zoning that was submitted within the report. Lots 27 and 26 are both within the AH6, the Affordable Housing 6 Zone. As Mr. Regan mentioned, they were a component of your Affordable Housing Settlement Agreement with Fair Share Housing Center that was ultimately approved by the court, and, which included the rezoning of these properties. Lot 2 is within the A4, I'm sorry, the R4A zone, which this lot, particular lot, was not a part of your Affordable Housing Settlement Agreement, but with, along with Lot 26 and Lot 27, all three were placed under an Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, permitting affordable housing development on all three sites. The area is surrounded by mixed use and commercial to, along Witherspoon Street, other single-family residential zoning is again located along Jefferson Road, the redevelopment area that created the Avalon at Princeton across the street, and more commercial properties to the north along Witherspoon. Lot 27, as depicted in this slide, we have on the left hand is the pure aerial image, and on the right hand is the three-dimensional view, both of these taken from, from Google Earth, recently satellite photographed. Lot 27 consists of an existing surface lot. This was originally constructed to support the hospital site when it was located across the street. We don't have an exact date of construction, but through historic aerials, we can see sometime between 1956 and 1963, the lot was constructed, and really didn't change much after that time. The, the image on the lower side, the lower left here, is the most recent aerial image from 2019, and you can see not much has changed between 1963 and 2019 on this site. There are two entrances to the site off of Franklin, one on the east side, one on the west side. The property currently has dividers, jersey barriers going along the west side, appears to be mostly used by municipal vehicles for parking and storage of somewhat appeared to be broken down vehicles, and I was there. The east side has been used for a variety of uses. The farmer's market is there on a few days a week, and a few days a month. Also, I was told by the Housing Authority that the high school also uses this part of the parking lot as overflow parking. I did not confirm that with the high school, but when I was there in May, I did witness, it was a Friday, and I did witness several, several cars parked towards this end, and that's when they, they advised me that that was the case. The property is currently owned by the municipality, previously, again, the hospital, but since the hospital vacated, it has not been used as frequently as it had previously been. Lot 26, which is directly to the west of Lot 27, is constructed with what is known as Franklin Terrace. It was, the, the three buildings that make up this development were built in 1938. They are single-story residential multifamily units. They're 10 units altogether, mostly one-bedroom. I, I believe the Housing Authority indicated there was one-two bedroom on this site. All of them have front doors that enter onto the courtyard, and rear doors that enter onto these back driveways. The site has, also has two driveways, each leading to a parking lot, however, the parking lots do not connect to each other. When I was there on my site visit, I did count 10 parking spaces, so it appears the site is currently parking at one space per unit, although there was no striping on this southern southeastern surface area when I was there. The property is owned by the municipality of Princeton, but it has been operated and maintained by the Princeton Housing Authority for, at least since the 1960s. The tenants of this site are considered low-income by HUD standards. Again, Lot 26 and Lot 27 are the two that are components of the municipality's Affordable Housing Settlement Agreement. Lot 2 is directly to the west of Lot 26. It is constructed almost in an identical manner to Lot 26, with the exception that there is no onsite parking, and given the shape of the property, the buildings are not in a U, in a formal harsh U shape, but they're kind of, they're really more arced, facing out towards Franklin. Again, they're single-story, there's 10 units. This was constructed, it appears about a decade later, so in the late 1940s. But again, really identical to what's happening on Lot 26. Lot 2 is known as Maple Terrace, and also is occupied by low-income, oops, low-income tenants, and maintained by the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority does own this site, where it does not own Lot 26. And as I indicated before, the Lot 2 is not a component of the municipality's Affordable Housing Settlement Agreement, but is included in the overlay zoning that was adopted last year. The study that was submitted before you has a bit more discussion about the zoning, the existing zoning. For time and efficiency purposes, I won't go into detail of that, however, that is fully discussed in the study, and the zoning is found in the appendix of the study as well. So moving on to the analysis of the redevelopment criteria, this begins on page 20 of the report. Through the analysis that I'll go through in a minute, it was determined that all three properties in the study area are recommended for designation under Criterion D. I know this Board has heard a few redevelopment studies in the past, so you're familiar that there are various criteria that can be evaluated when, when conducting a redevelopment study, an area in need study. I'd be happy to review them if anybody had any questions, but again, I know you are familiar with the process, so for the sake of efficiency, I won't go through all of them. I will just read here what Criterion D states, which is areas with buildings or improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, light, and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, deleterious land use or obsolete layout, or any combination of these or other factors are detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community. So here we have a few, I, I grabbed a few photos of the report from Lot 27. Of course, there are many more in there that I would encourage you to look at, as they really do present a, a more holistic picture of, of the site, as it is a very large site. So again, I was there in March, we can see with the snow on the ground, and again in May, where things have bloomed and cleared up a little bit. So the, the surface parking lot, this surface parking lot previously served the hospital, but it has not, the hospital itself has not been operating in this area since 2012, so nine years now it's been gone. And it's, it's vacating of the site across the street has left this parking lot obsolete and consistently underparked for the size and the number of parking spaces. There are well over 200 parking spaces here that, as can be seen in the various aerial images I captured, over the years have not been parked anywhere near capacity. I, the, these are taken from Google Earth images. Google Earth had a pretty wide range of dates in terms of day of the week, month, year. So you can see up here, 2013 to 2000, to May 2015, September 2015, April 2016, and then if we jump up here to August 2016, April 2017, October 2017, and July 2018. There's one additional set, image in the study from 2019. It just did not fit nicely on, on this PowerPoint slide, but you're welcome to take a look at that on your own. But as can be seen, these aerial images are taken during the summer, during the school year, on Saturdays and Saturdays. But as can be seen, these aerial images are taken during the summer, during the school year, on Saturdays and Sundays during the week. It's obviously daylight, so it's taken during, during the day. There's really no cars parked in almost any of these. Again, when I was there in May, I did witness a few more cars parked in the upper east side, which I would have to believe the housing authority that those are associated with the high school. But when I was there in March, there was no cars parked here except my tiny little Honda Civic parked right in the middle. I believe the high school might have still been doing remote learning at that time, but I have not confirmed that. Regardless, it has consistently been not parked at capacity over the years. Even though it is used for the farmer's market, there really isn't other need for this parking lot in the area. The residents in the single-family homes all have their own parking onsite. The Avalon across the street, the multifamily development, it maintained the old parking garage from the hospital. They have an abundance of parking onsite. The parking study that Princeton did in, I believe it was 2017, also analyzed the site and it never was parked at anywhere close to even 50% capacity. And they, they analyzed it multiple times of the day and, and of the week. So there's consistent evidence that shows that this, this parking lot is really just sitting, really just sitting empty. There are signs of, of disrepair and unkept, unkeptness of the site. It clearly has not been kept up in terms of striping. You can see a few stripes here, but I'm standing right in front of where I parked and all, this whole area over here as I walked over had really no striping left. You can see the lower left photo here, can't really see any parking, any striping there either. So really hasn't been kept up in that sense, which is more of a cosmetic thing, but at the same time, if it were to be used consistently as a parking lot, that would be certainly a, a safety and efficiency measure to ensure that that was kept up. Also, I believe a lot of it is from the, the jersey barriers that were put up that divides the property, but there are huge chunks of pavement that has been upheaved and not replaced. I also saw some graffiti towards the end of the parking lot against the fence. So again, just not, not kept up. It also appears in the upper right-hand photo to be used as some storage. There was a lot of mattresses stacked there. And a lot of the municipal vehicles that are parked here is can be seen in the lower right-hand corner. Some of them appeared to be broken down, several had flat tires. This one SUV doesn't have a grill on the front, so it seems to be used as really a storage lot. The lot can also be categorized as by excessive impervious coverage. And if you remember, that was one of the key points of the Criterion D's definition. The existing zoning allows for 80%. It is nearing 100% impervious coverage. I did confirm with the municipality's engineer, Mr. Purcell, that there is no onsite catch basins or other stormwater management infrastructure to help control the flow of water. So when it rains, it just, it just sheets off towards the street. There's nothing capturing it and allowing it to percolate into the, into the ground. The site, as was shown in the historic aerials, was developed almost 70 years ago. And so it is absolutely, there are no stormwater best minute, best management practices employed here. And as you probably know, the state has adopted new stormwater management rules recently. I do believe the municipality has updated theirs to be consistent and this in no way meets any of those best management practices. So all, all of these factors here leave this site obsolete and with proper, proper stormwater management infrastructure that can be detrimental. Moving on to lots 26 and, and two, I'm going to talk about these two together because they really are identical, again with the slight exceptions that I mentioned earlier about the parking and the, the layout toward facing the roadway. Besides that, they have the, the same, they're developed in the same manner and have the same conclusions reached for each, for each lot. So I'm, I'm going to speak about them in tandem. The top photos here are exterior photos from lot 26 Franklin Terrace. And the bottom photos here are a few exterior photos from lot two Maple Terrace. Like I said before, there's a lot more photos in my, my report, so I recommend taking a look at all of those as you review this. I've also posted here four photos from the interior of each side, the left, I'm sorry, of each development. The left two photos here are from Franklin Terrace on lot 26. The right two photos here are from Maple Terrace on lot two. The unit, one of the two units on lot two that I entered happened to be vacant, which did provide a little bit of an easier vantage point to view what was happening there. So again, both of these are identical in size and layout. The sites are obsolete because of their faulty arrangement and antiquated layout, their outdated designs. Each apartment, all 20 apartments that make up both of these developments, each one is only 489 square feet. That was measured, that was a measurement provided by the housing authority. Each consists of either one or two bedrooms. Again, there's only, I believe, one two-bedroom unit in each development. The rest are one-bedroom units. There's a kitchen, a living space, a linen closet and a bathroom in each unit. At 489 square foot, one-bedroom bath is an incredibly small unit by modern standards. And as a point of reference, I referred to the Housing Mortgage and Finance Agency, which offers a gut rehab grant for units such as these, but there are minimum size requirements of the units to qualify. A one-bedroom unit has to be at least 600 square feet and a two-bedroom has to be 800 square feet. So these two buildings, two developments fall incredibly short of meeting those minimum thresholds. They are just incredibly small and cramped for, for a modern standard. There's, there's lack of storage space within them. We saw most residences can be seen in the lower right-hand photo here. I'm sorry, yeah, lower right-hand photo. There's a, not much room to store things. A lot ends up outside. This particular lot two doesn't have really any rear yards, so it gets crowded up there. The photos in the, there's another photo in the study that shows how some people are hanging their clothes on the fences to dry because they don't have adequate space for dryers. As can be seen in this image, the second from the left, this particular tenant has brought in their own washer dryer independent unit and has stacked one of them on the kitchen and one of them on the floor. All of the units that were entered were very, they were overcrowded in terms of, of the furniture and the appliances. There, the, the units were simply designed for a different time and, and really just don't fit modern standards. And that includes the number of outlets and the type of outlets. The kitchen outlets that we observed as can be seen in the second photo from the right, they do not have those ground fault, the ground fault circuit interruptors. And that's those little black and red switchy things you'll see on, on the outlets. Whenever I blow dry my hair, mine goes out because I live in an old building, so I always have to trip it. You're required to have that in the kitchen and the bathroom. We, I did not take note of the one in the bathroom, but I did note that the kitchens do not have that. And that could be, that is a safety problem and can be detrimental to those tenants. None of the units are ADA accessible. All of them require at least one step to get in. And both of these developments have stairs leading to the street level. In the case of Maple Terrace, quite a few actually, as the grade does change consistently here from Franklin Terrace. Including, and there's a, there's an extremely steep ramp leading from Maple Terrace to the Witherspoon Street sidewalk. That while I did not have a measurement to measure the slope while I was there on site, I can tell from experience that it is not the, the appropriate grade for a wheelchair to access it. Even if they were to be able to get up, they could not easily get into one of the units because again, each one of the units has a step to get up. So there is no ADA accessible unit in either of these two developments. Again, signs of disrepair throughout both. You can see from some of these exterior photos, you know, the housing authority has done a, a good job keeping up the units. However, there is only so much they can do. The upper right photo here shows the rotted baseboard and a screen, that's a screen door that's really almost bent in half. A lot of rotted wood was noted throughout this, the site visits. The interior ones, as can be seen in the left photo here, a lot of cracking in the ceilings. A lot of units were experiencing this particular problem. The vacant unit that we entered had multiple dead rodents throughout. You can see one on the far right photo here. That was in one of the bedrooms, but they were found in the living room and in the closet that has the, the furnace as well. And again, rotting baseboards, significant issues with the, with the upkeep of, of the units. The housing authority has in the past done upgrades to the units in terms of about 10 years ago, they replaced roofs and did some sewer upgrades to the, the, the lines connecting to the street. Those upgrades certainly helped keep these up to code and keep them livable to a point, but those, those changes could not fundamentally change the outdated design of these and, and the site layout that contributes to its obsolescence and the detriment to the tenants of, that are living within here, within each unit. The housing authority also expressed that at the onset of COVID-19, they, they worked to find a way to bring in wifi across both of these developments as everybody had all of a sudden gone to living and working and going to school from home. Many of these tenants have children who were all of a sudden thrown to online learning. So the housing authority really wanted to, to give them the wifi that, that would help aid in that. And really, these days wifi is almost a non-necessity. It's how we get all of our news, basically, information. Most people, a lot of people don't have cable. A lot of people my age just rely on the internet streaming services. So without adequate wifi, it really is hard to survive in these, in, in this modern time. The housing authority ultimately determined that they could not do development-wide wifi given the outdated construction of the buildings. They did not feel that they could support so many punctures in the roof to bring in the equipment. They did not have the funds to do further studies to see what the cost would be to reinforce the buildings, to bring in the equipment that would be needed. So that, that endeavor was investigated, but ultimately it was not pursued because they, they, it was not deemed feasible. As we had, as I previously mentioned, lot 26 is a component of the town's Affordable Housing Settlement Agreement. That agreement stated that both lot 26 and lot 27 together were to create 80 affordable units, which is, of course, the creation of such is is a public good. Providing affordable housing opportunities serves the public good. So the current layout of all three sites does not lend itself to providing those units that, those units that would support, support the tenants that, that really need them and, and provide for their benefit. So as, as a conclusion, and here we have all three sites again. It is my opinion that they do qualify under the Criterion D. The, the units are outdated, they're, they're not safe in some instances. They do not have ADA accessibility for, for their tenants or anybody visiting. The lot 27 does not have proper stormwater management. It is significantly underutilized and is the underutilization is showing in, in the way that you can see parts of it starting to crumble and not be, not being kept up. So it is my recommendation that the planning board and the municipality ultimately take what steps are necessary to designate this area, all three sites under Criterion D as an area in need of redevelopment. The appendices does include several background documents, including the original resolution from the council, but also the tax data for all three lots and all of the historic deeds and documents for the three. They, if anyone wants some bedtime reading to help put you to sleep, they actually have a pretty interesting history that I've included in the appendix. So that's, that is all in there. It's an interesting history of a, of a piece of Princeton. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to take, take any questions you might, might have and I'll, I'll exit at the screen.
Thank you, Ms. Mertz. Do board members have questions? Or comments or? Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, I have a question. Under the local redevelopment and housing law, there are eight criteria, I believe, and you focused on criteria D for all three of the properties. Would you say that any of the other criteria would also apply to this now? As far as I understand, you only have to meet one of the criteria in order to be designated as a redevelopment zone. Is that correct?
That's correct. You, you just need one. When I was looking through this, I momentarily stopped on Criterion E, which discusses a growing lack of proper utilization due to the condition of title or diverse ownership or any other condition that might impede assemblage to, to, to develop the sites. I ultimately decided not to move forward with that one because there really wasn't an argument in terms of the key part of that, which is anything associated with a diverse or, or convoluted issue with the title of the property or the ownership. There had been some question about the ownership of lot 26, but in the title search that the municipality did, that was cleared up. So ultimately I decided not to move forward with that. Several of the others have to do with commercial properties. Clearly, these are not commercial, so we chose not to move forward with that one. The one criteria that has to do with smart growth, Criterion H, sometimes that one is discussed. That one could be assigned to this. However, I'm always hesitant to use Criterion H because I don't feel that there's as strong a backing for using that as a designation. There, it is of course permitted in the local redevelopment and housing law. I just, I feel that one is in my opinion, easier to challenge and harder to back up. There's not as much concrete evidence and discussion among that one. So, so ultimately after all of that, Criterion E made the most sense for all three properties. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your explanation.
Yeah.
I guess I have a question. I, oh, I'm sorry. It's Mr. McGowan, please.
You mentioned that as it's laid out now, it's not configured for, for 80 units? I just, I think I understand what's, what's going on, but it, it could be if it's, if if this is under a redevelopment plan. I just want to be clear, that's all.
Correct. So the way that, when I said the way that they're laid out, I really mean the way that they are in their current state and their current development. They're not, you could not add on, do, do additions, do renovations, do redevelopment with a lowercase r, I'll say. That would allow for that type of development with how the lots are currently situated, excuse me, situated and developed.
Okay.
Mr. Taylor, I, I can see you, you're still on mute. There you go.
I seem to click on the right button and it still doesn't work. Question. There are 20 residential units. I think it would be useful to know how many residents do we have on the property? Because when the development process begins, obviously the community will need to give attention to what to do with those residents during the construction process. And it seems to me that even, even longer term, how to treat them with respect to whatever the units to follow. How many residents are we dealing with?
I'm, I'm not equipped to answer that fully. The housing authority would have to provide that. I can tell you out of the four units that I visited, one of them was empty and the other three all had families of four living in them. But the housing authority would have to provide specific numbers about the actual, the, the overall number.
A good question though, and it, it'll be important when the time comes, of course, to make sure that the families and individuals who are living there are, you know, have a, have a place to go, a safe, good place to go in.
This, I just want, if I might, Matt and Chair, just with respect to relocation.
If I might, Madam Chair, just with respect to relocation, just on that issue, if ultimately the redevelopment law is used with respect to the development of these properties, by law, they're obligated, there's a requirement for relocation requirements to be included in a redevelopment plan. And obviously, this would be a public project, so clearly that would be a paramount concern that would need to be addressed as part of the overall process, the relocation of the tenants.
I should clarify that I don't actually know that they were families of four, but I do know the three occupied units had four individuals in them when I was there. So just wanted to clarify that.
So a long time ago, when the redevelopment law, and I may be going on shaky ground in terms of my own knowledge, but you'll get where I'm going with this soon. I think that way back in the day, a town or a property owner, in order to have a property considered for designation as a redevelopment area, needed to prove that the site was blighted. And I recall from a more recent redevelopment process in the town of Princeton that that criteria no longer applies. Between you, Ms. Mertz, and you, Mr. Regan, could you speak to that?
I'll start and then I'll have Mr. Regan fill in all the legal stuff. You're correct, that term blight is no longer applied. When the redevelopment law was amended in 1992, that term was really removed from it. It hearkens back to the old urban renewal from the earlier part of the century. It has a negative connotation that when they decided to amend the redevelopment law, they took that out. So that's why we refer to it now as an area in need instead of a blighted area. So none of the criteria talk about blight specifically. There's been some case law that I'll refer to, Frank, for the specifics, but that talk about blight in relation to criterion E, not criterion D, is what we're talking about here tonight. But you are correct that that is outdated and antiquated phrase that we don't apply anymore.
And I think that's accurate, that blight emanated from the state constitution in, I think, 1948. And ultimately, the initial redevelopment laws back in the 50s. And courts have discussed the issue of blight in decisions in the past, I don't know, 14 years. But most of those discussions have been focused, as Ms. Mertz said, on criteria E, which is not being utilized in this instance.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification. Any other questions from board members before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. So if you are a member of the public and would like to speak, then, and I see that two folks have raised their hands already. We have 18 panelists, meaning us board people and staff and consultants and et cetera. And then an additional 24 people attending the meeting, three of whom now have raised their hands. So we invite folks to speak, again, please, to the question of the suitability of these properties to be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. And we ask with respect that you do your very best to keep your comments to three minutes. Some number of us will be putting our little timers on. And when you are brought into the meeting by Ms. Philip, you'll be brought in as a participant and we'll ask you to unmute yourself and activate your camera so that everybody can see who is speaking, and then Mr. Regan will swear you in.
Madam, Mr. Cohen has his hand raised.
Oh, sorry, David, I'm looking in the wrong place. Please, go right ahead.
I just was trying to figure out what the right time was to ask this question. I think it's now. A couple of us received a written statement by email regarding this application from a member of the public. And I understand that for this type of hearing, for hearing about an area in need of redevelopment, that written submissions are allowed to be in the record. And I'd like to ask if Mr. Regan can suggest the best way to incorporate the written comment that we've received.
Okay, and I will confirm, Mr. Cohen is correct that the redevelopment law does allow for written objections to be submitted as evidence and made part of the public record. What I guess we should do is, in the old days, everybody would get a copy of those written objections. But since we're doing it virtually, I believe if Carrie is in possession of that, it probably should be circulated to the board members for their benefit. If that can be.
Carrie, why don't you go ahead and forward to all the board members? I received a copy as well forwarded to me maybe an hour before the meeting started. So I know that, I don't know how many board members received it, but it certainly wasn't everyone. So Carrie, if you do have that teed up, just send it along to folks. It's 15 or 16 pages. Ms. Sacks?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's something different with the redevelopment process because normally, Mr. Mueller, our attorney, advises us that we are, as planning board members, not permitted to read any written submissions to us from the public in advance of the hearing. And so now I think members have just admitted in this hearing that they've read it.
Oh, no, I'm just saying it was 16 pages. But Mr. Regan, I'll let him speak to that. I purposely actually did not.
I'm sorry. In the normal course, under the municipal land use law, which is generally what this board follows when it is considering a matter before the board, such written objections are not permitted. And all objections need to be placed on the record. The redevelopment law has a specific provision which indicates that all objections to such a determination and evidence in support of those objections, given orally or in writing, shall be received and considered and made part of the public record. So in this instance, it is permissible.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks for that clarification.
I still need a little clarification because even if the members of the board have received it, the public hasn't been privy to it. And if it's supposed to be part of the public record, I mean, do we need to read it out loud? Or what's the proper way to?
Now, I don't think it's, look, it has been submitted by an individual to the board as written objection to the hearing. I don't believe it needs to be read into the record because the purpose of submitting something in writing is that it becomes part of the record. Ultimately, it's this board's deliberation and determination to make that recommendation to the governing body. So that written objection, I believe, is really for your consideration as part of your deliberations as opposed to the public's. Obviously, the public will be entitled to obtain a copy of it after the fact. It will be part of the public record, that this board generates as a result of this hearing. But it does not need to be read into the record.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Regan, just from a practical purpose, board members who did not receive this, I mean, we're not going to be able to read it while other members of the public are commenting. And the rest of our agenda is full. So I don't know what that means for the legality of this. I mean, obviously, it can be entered into the record. But unless we're going to have a longer-than-usual break to allow the board members to read this, it's just confusing from a practical purpose.
Well, we have four people who have raised their hands, and it may be that one of the four is the author. I don't know whether that would make a difference or not, but if that is the case, then that person can read from or summarize. I don't know whether that's a distinction without a difference or not.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, just so everyone knows. The resident, who's a resident of Jefferson Road, came in to speak with staff at the end of the day. And I sat with him at length to go over both the issue at hand, the redevelopment plan review tonight, but also the process, the planning board process. And I think we talked for over an hour. And so I did not receive this document until past business hours after 5 o'clock. So I just wanted you to know that this was very late in coming in today. And I did give him my word that I would bring it to the board's attention, even though with other applications or for other hearings, we usually don't take testimony that isn't provided live by the authors. So I just wanted to clarify why it's coming to you in this forum and at this late at time.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael.
One of those speakers may in fact be this gentleman because he was going to try to meet, he had a conflict, a scheduled conflict, but he was going to try to join the meeting.
Okay.
I do want to echo what Mr. Quinn just said. Again, I haven't received it. I haven't read it. I mean, it's going to be a little tough for me to give an opinion if it's just this last minute, not even an hour before the meeting. You know, so I want to echo the comments that Mr. Quinn made.
Madam Chair, I've just been informed by my crack staff, which is the best planning staff in the United States, if not the world, that Mr. Myers, who is actually the author, is in the audience and has his hand raised.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Okay. Well, then, let's proceed with the public hearing. Carrie, can you bring over the first person and then announce the first and second?
We have four people with their hands raised. The first individual is Portia Wong, and the next is Mr. Myers.
Okay.
Ms. Wong, if you could just raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony or questions that you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Actually, I raised my hand as soon as I came into the call. I want to speak on the landmark development part of the meeting tonight. So I don't know if my comments are still entertained at this point in time.
The resolution, the findings of fact that memorialized the board's approval of that application was adopted earlier in the meeting.
Yes, I had my hand raised since before that even began, and nobody called on me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was not a public hearing. The public hearing for that took place at earlier meetings. So I'm not sure how to, I guess it's safe to say this is not the time for you to talk about landmark. I, you know, it's awkward. I apologize that you were not able to speak your mind. Did you attend any of the meetings where we discussed?
Yeah, my husband and I have attended several over the course of the last, certainly, six months, if not the last year. We've tried to attend everyone. Sometimes it's hard to know when they're happening, if I'm frank.
Well, the findings of fact have been adopted by the board. And so the deed is done.
Madam Chair, if I could make a suggestion that maybe we arrange to have a copy of the findings of fact sent to Ms. Wong, and she can see what's in there and determine.
They are online, Tim.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go.
So.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to finish and determine whether she would like to follow up with either the developer or with our professionals.
Yep, thanks, Tim. And I'm sorry to have started to interrupt. Carrie, even though it is online, please just cut and paste a copy into an email and send it to Ms. Wong. Ms. Wong, if you could provide Carrie with your email address, not right now, but either by calling or emailing her through the planning office, then she can get that into your hands, okay?
Sure, that would be great, please. Thank you.
And if you have any objections to the wording of it, once it's in the paper, you have time to file an appeal. And that is the public's option in such a case.
Thanks for that, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, the next individual is Mr. Myers. I believe he's the gentleman that wrote.
Okay.
Promoting him.
Thank you. And then after, Mr. Myers?
Harold Heft, and then Alice Artz.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. We can hear you, Mr. Myers, but we cannot yet see you. Can you activate your camera, please, sir?
I will do my best. Start video.
There we go.
There we go.
Mr. Myers, if you could just raise your right hand.
Right hand.
You swear, do you swear any testimony that you might provide will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to apologize for the late submission. In brief, my home at 86 Jefferson Road is held in the name of my very aged and just recently deceased mother. And I had not received really any information about all this entire process over the last five years. And on her passing, I just recently, for the first time, received the butters notice and became aware of this and started my conversations with my neighbors and engaged in some very intensive research, which is generally speaking my profession. I'm a professor of political science. It will be difficult and probably, in a sense, impossible for me to summarize all of the considerations that I lay out in the document. And so I do ask that it become part of the record for your consideration. And I appreciate very much your, especially Mr. Laplace's assistance in moving that forward, even though I just appeared at his office at the last hour. So thanks to him and thanks to the board for the willingness to consider it all at this stage in the game. I would like to, I'm just thinking how to proceed here and make this as brief as possible. And obviously, you'll cut me off when your timer starts ringing or whatever, and I will do my best. Before coming to the central point, I would like to underscore that the term blight is not obsolete in the jurisprudence by any stretch of the imagination. And in the document that I submitted, the equation of blight with the phrase "the area in need of redevelopment" is discussed. And it is pivotal because the word blight or the condition of blight under that term or under the updated phrase "area in need of redevelopment" remains a constitutional consideration. And so at issue here fundamentally is a constitutional. And so at issue here fundamentally is a constitutional question. It's not a simple one, and it involves a lot of balancing on the one hand. On the other hand, if, if, as you know much better than I do, your considerations are constrained quite tightly by the regulations for the determination of an area in need of redevelopment. And to such an extent that the jurisprudence, I'm thinking particularly of Justice Albin, in what I will refer to as the, either the Hackensack decision that is noticed in the statement that I give you, or in the Galifin decision, that the justices themselves make a point of making explicit that you are, on the one hand, given great latitude in making decisions of this sort. But with that, that prerogative on your part comes also additionally heightened and rigorous obligation to follow very strictly the rules as they are laid down and the criteria given for this determination. So there's a very high sense of deep constraint that has good tail, and think about it as you make your determination. Having said that, generally about blight, I, I want to focus really, because as you have said correctly on, on the, the notice for this meeting, the question at hand is, are you able to or authorized to, or is it justified to make a determination of the Franklin Street lots as areas in need of redevelopment? And specifically of one of the two varieties about the non-condemnation store. I, now going specifically to the report, with great respect to Ms. Merz, and I think you will find on careful consideration, and perhaps with the assistance of the document, I assume matters of law and matters of fact. But specifically, the point of focus here should be the single matter of law, which is the selected criterion for the determination, which is what's for criterion D. Criteria, in, well, I, actually, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time criticizing the report I note here for a second. Although I don't really need the notes. The criterion D is, and with respect to its substance, it is very, very clear that the criteria for judgment, which I'll say parenthetically, is a determination of whether there is blight or not, either under the, the word blight or under the sense and meaning of the phrase, area in need of redevelopment. So the criterion in the paragraph called criterion D, the part of it that is actually the criterion by which you must judge the facts as they are before you. As areas with buildings or improvements which, and then there's this subordinate clause, which I'm going to leave out because it is not their conditions for consideration of the criteria. The criteria continues, areas with buildings or improvements which, whatever, are detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community. So the, the yardstick here for making this determination is, are these things detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community? Now, the subordinate clause to which, it, sorry, is, which is the only part of this paragraph to which the report refers and to which most discussions of these issues refer contain such empirical conditions as dilapidation, obsolescence, or, you know, all of those things that you've seen. And the one that was mostly emphasized here this evening and in the report is this idea, the empirical condition of obsolescence. Obsolescence, something being obsolescence is not by law, by the constitution or the case law or the legislation. It is not a measure of whether something is, can be determined to be an area in need of redevelopment. It is, so to speak, an empirical hypothesis, which allows us to look at the facts on the ground. For example, the condition of the parking lot, and then make a connection to the constitutional consideration, which is blight, or now, under another phrase, an area in need of redevelopment. But that is the measure.
And Mr. Myers? Thank you. I, I, I have, you've had about seven and a half or eight minutes, and
My apologies.
I, I, but anyone on the board can tell you, I am terrible about observing the three-minute rule, and I wanted to give you, I did, really didn't start the thing going until your preamble, and I, I know I speak for the board in expressing condolences, and I'm terribly sorry for the circumstances and you're not knowing about this until the last minute. As to the, and, and that itself may be, I don't know whether that is a, a matter that our council should, should address, since you, you know, are is, does eighty-six Jefferson abut this property? I'm not familiar with exactly where eighty-six is.
I'm, I'm, do you still hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I'm on the little alleyway that runs right next to Lot twenty-seven.
Okay. So, Mr. Regan, the fact that Mr. Myers really didn't know until, until very, very recently, because the home was owned by his mother, who just recently passed. Can you speak to the, to notice requirements and, and that kind of thing? It is an important issue of fairness.
Under the redevelopment law.
If you want to speak to any of the legal issues he raised, you can do that too, but I especially wanted you to speak to the notice issue.
A, a, as to the notice, the notice requirements under the local redevelopment and housing law for a public hearing, such as is being conducted tonight by this board, is that notice needs to be sent to the affected property owners or property owners whose properties are subject, or, I'm sorry, are included in the study area. So essentially, it would be the owners of the three properties that are part of this study. Unlike the municipal land use law, which requires notice to property owners within two hundred feet, the redevelopment law only requires notice to those property owners whose properties are subject to the study area. There is a requirement that notice be published in the newspaper ten day, two consecutive weeks, with the last date of publication being ten days prior to the scheduled hearing. So there is a, a public notice requirement, but it is only, it is limited to a publication in the newspaper. So Mr. Myers or his, his mother, who was the owner of the property, would not have received a mailed notice to the, with respect to this hearing.
Okay, actually, we did.
Mr. Mr. Regan, I did have the property owners list for all property owners two hundred feet beyond this scope, and they all received two mailings.
Okay. Well, I was unaware of that, that that notice was, was, was done. It's not required by, by law, but the fact that it was done, you know, I guess is just that's good for the, the, the property owners in, in the immediate neighborhood to be aware of this hearing. But again, that legally, that was not required.
Okay, Mr. Laplace, did you?
Yeah, I wanted to have maybe a question for Mr. Myers. And my staff recalls you coming to the office several weeks ago, about a month ago, you know, in regards to this topic. Were you aware of this several weeks ago?
Mr. Myers?
I think you froze.
I think his screen might have frozen.
An aspect of it, but I did, can you see me? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that you were aware of it about a month ago.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, we're having a, a little bit of problem with your feed. It's a, it's garbled sometimes, but you, you're going to answer Mr. Laplace's question?
So I was, I, I think I'm on now.
Yes.
My, my signal is, I'm, I'm in a church waiting for my son to finish his orchestra rehearsal. So I can't, I can't control the, the quality of the signal. But anyway, you're, 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 with respect to your question, several weeks ago is when the, the mailed notification came to my mother's house in Massachusetts, and I came in to ask a preliminary question about it, and I started looking into it. I was discouraged by various other people from pursuing this, but as I looked further into it, I had made some interesting discoveries that I thought would be important to bring to the attention of the planning board.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
And, but, by the way, I, I just want to say, I didn't, I didn't say that as an excuse, it's just an explanation for why I haven't been involved in the process for the last couple of years. That's all. It, I mean, it's on me that I brought it in so late, and you know, that's not an excuse. Again, I apologize for making your life a little bit more difficult.
That's a, no need to apologize. Thank you.
Okay, we have two more individuals who are ready to speak. If you would like me to, I could move Mr. Harold Heft over.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you very much.
Sir, I'm waiting for the video to start here. There I am. Okay.
Great, welcome.
If you would just raise your right hand.
Thank you very much for holding this public hearing, and thank you for giving a chance to speak.
Mr. Regan needs to, needs to swear.
Do you swear that any testimony you might give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. I live at ninety-six Jefferson. I'm, I'm one of the three parcels along Jefferson Road that backs onto Lot twenty-seven. And I've spoken many times at various hearings for this. I was, was able to read Mr. Myers' letter this afternoon. I'm not an attorney, so I can't, I can't speak to the validity of his legal arguments. But my, my concern is that they seem something like something that should be considered seriously by the members of the planning board before they make a recommendation. So if you haven't had a chance to read it, the question that I would have for, for, for the board is do you need to table the actual vote on this until, until you have a chance to consider his conversations? There's a lot of technicalities on, on both, both sides of, of the process, whether it can move forward as suggested by Ms. Merz, or whether it should be held off until some reconsideration is done in order to actually justify it under the, the redevelopment laws, regulations. So, so I offered that. I also want to clarify something I think Mr. Regan misspoke, and that is there's nothing in what Mr. Myers wrote that objected to tonight's hearing. What he objected to wasn't really an objective. He was recommending against the, the recommendation for the resolution for an area of none, of redevelopment. So that's important. I believe that Mr. Myers feels that this is part of the process, since it's been brought up. But he doesn't feel that it, it should be, it should be recommended to, to the council to, to pass that resolution. And his arguments, again, I'm not, I'm not a legal expert, but have some merit based on two Supreme Court decisions, New Jersey Supreme Court decisions, equating blight with area in need of redevelopment specifically in there. So I think it needs to be looked at, and those of you that haven't had a chance to read it yet, you need to read it and see whether you think he's full of it or whether he's, you know, or whether he's on the right track. And the other thing is just, there is an error in the, the data that was offered by Ms. Merz and her company. It notes that there's a public alleyway behind the houses on Jefferson Road. That is not a public alleyway. It is private property. It's not maintained by the city, by the municipality in any way, shape, or form. There is a right of way for emergency vehicles in case of emergencies. Other than that, it's private property. So it's not a public alley. That needs to be corrected. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Heft.
Okay, the last individual to speak is Alice Arts.
And I would just add, while Ms. Arts is being brought in, that this sort of last call, anybody who wishes to speak. Okay, so one additional person has raised their hand. This is a public hearing, so if you wish to speak this evening, please virtually raise your hand so that we
I think, I, I think I did already. Am I?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, you did. I was talking to everybody else.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So you'll need to be sworn in first. Thank you.
You swear that any testimony you, you are about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do. Okay, this is kind of peripheral, and I was going to back up somebody else who doesn't seem to be here. But they had, had found they were living very nearby. And they were a bit worried about the fact that if you build all sorts of houses and housing developments on these street lots, where are people going to be able to park? Because there's already, you know, as we know, there's already all sorts of, everybody's running around madly trying to find parking for people who work on Nassau Street or the choir college, I mean, not the choir college, the high school. And I live on Hawthorne Avenue, and I'm very much affected by all of that and extremely worried that we will lose the, the problem, we will have more problems as we did before we had the, the situation that we have now, which we're very happy with. And so my observation would be, obviously, I think the parking lot there needs upgrading, and the houses probably need upgrading too, that I am not a specialist in, and I'm all for fixing up things and having people be, and live there. But I would urge people to leave some parking for high school students who would otherwise be desperate to park on our street, which we're trying to not have because we had huge problems with it earlier. Or people who work on Nassau Street who could park there, and that would be probably nearer their workplaces than, you know, parking on Hawthorne Avenue. So I'm hoping that this will be thought through thoroughly, and whatever is done, that it will be done in a way that maybe upgrade some of the parking, leave some of the parking places for people who need it, and, and doesn't shunt yet more people out onto the street, all desperately running around trying to find places to park. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And just so, for the record, is your last name A R T Z T Arts?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, I just want to make sure.
German word for doctor. It's the medieval spelling. A lot of artists give up on the last T, and of course, the German word now doesn't have the first T, but we kept all of them. We're stubborn people.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We have two people waiting to speak, Anita Geroniac and then Corey Galston, so I'm promoting Anita. So I'm promoting Anita. Anita, can you put on your video, please?
Sorry, the video is not working. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, Anita Gironiac, one Harris Road.
Can you just raise your right hand? You swear that any testimony you might provide will be the truth?
Yes, I do swear. Hi, I'm going to echo some of the things I think Alice said, but in a different way. I am surprised, and I'm wondering if Ms. Merz was made aware that there is a proposed parking permit plan for this very neighborhood because there is a need for additional parking in the town, not only in this neighborhood, but in other neighborhoods. So I'm surprised to hear that the lot is being termed obsolete because we are now asking neighbors and homeowners in this neighborhood to pay for parking in front of their own homes with time limitations. So I just don't, you know, that is surprising to me that we would call this lot that we, you know, need obsolete. The other observation I want to make, and I live across, directly across from that lot, is that to, in the, since the pandemic, the lot hasn't behaved the same as it did before. There are, there are a lot of high school kids who use it in the morning and into the afternoon. There's also people who park there when there are games on at the high school. And there is the adult school that uses the parking lot when they are in session. So and that's in the late evening. So those are my basic comments. I would like to know if Ms. Merz was aware that there is a proposed parking plan to have neighbors in this neighborhood, myself included, have permits, pay for parking in front of their homes and with time limitation.
Okay, thank you for that. I don't know whether Ms. Merz was aware or could be expected to be aware of the parking study.
I want to mention Louise, you know, Anita, the situation with the permit parking is that regardless of whether the redevelopment goes through, that area is not available for parking because it's zoned for housing. So it's sort of irrelevant to the redevelopment designation. And even if the redevelopment designation doesn't go through, housing will be built on the, those lots have already been zoned for housing, which is why, as you know, there are other lots in the neighborhood being considered for parking.
Okay, but in terms of the presentation, it was said it was obsolete for parking.
I, right, I understand.
It's not underused and there isn't need.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gironiac.
So the last individual is Corey Galston. And I'm moving him over.
So Corey Galston, you are on mute. And your camera is not yet on. So if you could take care of both of those things, we'd appreciate it. And then Mr. Reagan can swear you in. Can you activate your camera? Because we are not hearing you if you're speaking.
There we go.
Ah, there we go.
Hello, everyone.
You can just raise your right hand, Mr. Galston.
Mr. Galston, you need to be sworn in. And your connection seems like it might not be stable. We're, you're freezing up on us.
Do you swear that any testimony you might provide will be the truth? Do you swear that any testimony you might provide will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, go right ahead.
So
I'm not understanding him at all. Is anybody?
No.
No.
You can probably call in to the meeting.
Turn off his video, maybe.
Yeah, try turning off your video and see if we can hear you better and close your email and anything else that might be.
Hey, Madam Chair, if we could suggest that he lead the meeting and try to re-enter, that might.
You're right, that that might be helpful. Mr. Galston.
That's assuming he can hear that suggestion.
If you can hear me, please, please leave the meeting and rejoin and see if your connection is better. Maybe move to the best part of your house.
I think Harry's suggestion that he call in by phone is the more certain to get a good result.
Yes, it's just the huge number of numbers. So Mr. Galston, I think he's already disconnected.
Well, on the agenda, there is a one-click number that is like a auto dial, so.
And does that also input the
Yep.
the meeting number and all of that? Okay.
I forget what it's called, speed dial or something, but it's one click.
Okay. Well, we'll see whether that works. First, we'll see if he can reconnect and.
I suggest that members of the board who haven't had a chance to review the memo, Mr. Myers' memo, perhaps take a look at that while we're waiting for Corey to get back into the meeting.
We also just got a hand raised for Virginia Kerr.
Yes, her hand was up before I saw, and then it went down. So maybe she put it down and didn't, didn't mean to. Why don't you bring Ms. Kerr in? And we will hope that Mr. Galston is able to come back. Hi, Ms. Kerr, can you unmute yourself, please?
Well, I'm just, first of all, I'd just like to say that I thought that this discussion was going to be later on the agenda. So I did miss the entire presentation.
Can I get Mr. Reagan to swear you in first? I apologize. I should have mentioned that for Frank.
If you can just raise your right hand, you swear that any testimony you might provide will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I didn't, I thought this was going to be later on the agenda, and I guess it was moved up when the meeting started. So I did miss the planners or the consultants' presentation. And I guess I'd like to go back to the issue of part, just, just statement that the parking lot is obsolete. And I'm looking at the page on the report that says the parking area that comprises lot 27 can be designated as an area in need of redevelopment under criterion D. And criterion D is areas with buildings or improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, et cetera, et cetera, or any combination of all of these are detrimental to the safety, health, morals or welfare of the community. Now, I'm speaking as a resident of this neighborhood, a longtime resident of this neighborhood, 120 on Jefferson Road around the corner. And I just have to say, and I realize this is a legal standard, but that as a resident of the neighborhood, I think all of us who live here just would say it's ridiculous to find that this lot is detrimental to the safety, health, morals or welfare of the community. That's not really a legal, that's just a personal statement. It seems absurd to find that. And I would like to then go to the point about the underutilization of the parking lot. And what I want to know is whether, I believe Anita Gironiac raised the point that there is a whole issue about parking in this neighborhood that we are dealing with, or there's a discussion about a parking proposal. And the town owns the lot. So this lot, were it not for the zoning, and we all understand that this is now zoned for residential use, but were it not for the zoning, the town would be able to use this lot to deal with the various parking pressures, including from the high school, including employees, including possible displacement of or loss of spaces on Hamilton. So I guess I would like to ask the consultant who did the report whether from, when you're analyzing an area in need of redevelopment for property that's in the hands of a public entity, to what extent does the fact that it is zoned for another use, residential use, just allow you to sort of put out of your mind all of these other factors that all of us know we're dealing with as a practical matter? Meaning that parking is at a premium in this neighborhood unless we start making rules for on-street parking. I know that was a really long question, but I would be interested in a response.
Thanks, Mr. La Place.
Yes, I'd like to add to that question before Ms. Merz answers it, that in her presentation and in staff's review, it was noted that not only was this board and the council rezoned this for residential, this site, but it's also a designated location for affordable housing project. So that's an important consideration as well because that's an official policy and something that was approved by the state, but an official policy of the town. So maybe Ms. Merz wants to, you know, think about that as well in her response.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, so to go back to your question, Ms. Kerr. In terms of when we review what the existing zoning is for a study area for redevelopment study, we review it in terms of what the existing conditions are, what is permitted versus what is there. Just because a site is zoned for something that it is not developed with does not automatically put it in to meet those criteria, in this case criterion D. The fact that it's developed with parking when it's permitted to be developed with residential was not a factor in me designating it under D. It was a consideration in evaluating the neighborhood. The factors that went into designating it under D were, one, to Mr. La Place's point, that it is a component of the broader settlement agreement with the town, which again includes the rezoning, but the important part is the affordable housing piece, where the provision to provide affordable housing is a public service and a public good. So when looking at the site itself, I know a few residents have said that it's very much a used parking lot. I used the data that was available to me, being site visits, the almost decade of different aerial images. And I know that you missed the presentation, but I reiterated the historic aerials that were in the report where it shows it never being parked near capacity. And I used the town zone parking study from 2017 that noted during peak hours that sites never even 50% parked. In relation to the current issues associated with parking in the municipality, I was not aware that there was something going through council. But even if I had been, it's not completely relevant to what we're doing here since we're looking specifically at the site. So to your core question, the zoning was not the fundamental source of my argument here. Does that, does that answer your question?
Well, in part, although you did, I mean, and I agree, providing affordable housing is absolutely a public good. But I guess I would say that if affordable, and we know affordable housing is a public good, so that if a site is, you know, zoned for affordable housing and would, what you're telling me, what you're saying is that your analysis of this hadn't, was not, was not influenced by the the proposed, the zoning for affordable housing? That you were looking at this independently of that? Is that what you were saying?
So almost. Let me try to clarify. It's because it is kind of complicated and strange. Broadly speaking, we do not compare a site that's up for redevelopment study to its zoning in terms of, let's say we're talking about something completely different. If it was a site zone for purely commercial and it was a parking lot, I'm not going to designate it because it's not constructed with what's permitted in the zone, per se. So the overall zoning, while it's reviewed, is not the deciding factor. In this case, because affordable housing and the site in particular is a component of the municipality's affordable housing, that's the particular component that was considered. So broadly speaking, it's not zoning. But because in this case zoning happens to be associated with the affordable housing, they are tied together a little bit. But typically, it's not the zone and the uses that are used to determine the site.
So when you say they're tied together a little bit.
Because it's zoned, it's zoned for affordable housing explicitly. If the zoning had not been adopted yet, but it had just been part of the settlement agreement, I was focusing on the settlement agreement and the municipality's housing element that associates this site. If the zoning had not been adopted yet, my argument would still be the same.
Okay, I guess one other question. What bearing does the fact that this property is owned by the town have on your analysis? Because the town has control over who can park there and who can't. So to some extent, the underutilization of the parking is a function of policy decisions made by the town. So if the town restricts parking, couldn't the town basically create the condition that leads you to conclude that the space is underutilized? And so, I mean, I think I've said enough. You kind of understand what my question is here.
No, it's a good question. When a municipality owns a lot, it doesn't influence the criteria. There is one criterion where if it's a municipally-owned vacant lot with no improvements, that that is a designating criteria. That's not the case here because it's not vacant. It's improved with a parking lot. Theoretically, a area in need could be developed, could be orchestrated over years of policy. I wouldn't know about the specifics of that site. I'm not sure if that's the case here. I wasn't believed to think that, being a public lot. Usually municipally-owned public lots are opened. And it was, in the parking study, it was designated as partially public. So they had indicated that it's available to the public during certain hours. So I relied on that data. But broadly speaking, no, we really, we don't consider the ownership in terms of criterion D.
Chair, Councilman Cohen, waiting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Shall I sign off?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Kerr.
Okay, you're welcome. Bye. Get out of here.
I guess this is an additional question for Ms. Merz in a way. The designation of this parking lot as an area in need of redevelopment doesn't say that it couldn't be redeveloped as a parking lot. I mean, right now, the design is obsolescent. I noticed, looking at the aerials, that there's an, because of the trapezoidal shape of the lot, there's an enormous swath of unusable pavement. And we know that this is more impervious coverage than is permitted in the zoning. It's more impervious coverage than is needed to park the number of cars. And it's not managed for stormwater. And I think that it's actually far And I think that it's actually far from absurd, but actually even a slam dunk to say that it's detrimental to the health and welfare of this neighborhood to have that large an amount of unmanaged, impervious coverage. So in my mind, that criterion D is very very well suited to the lot. But if you want to, Ms. Mertz, just address quickly the question. Just because it's an area in need of redevelopment doesn't mean that it couldn't be redeveloped for the same purpose. I know this one will not be. But you could designate an area in need of redevelopment for the same purpose, but in a better configuration.
Yeah, it's a very good point, Mr. Cohen. And also, I appreciate it. I think you really backed the the heart of what my argument was for this lot is, yes, to answer your question, you're right. It theoretically could absolutely be redeveloped as a parking lot with a better design, better stormwater, any stormwater management, because there's none right now. Less impervious coverage to meet standards, absolutely. It doesn't necessarily have to change the use. The argument was really the obsolescence of the layout, the excessive coverage, which is listed in there, as you said. And the fact that all of those combined really do pose a detriment to the community. So yes, I agree with what you said, and to answer your question, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. We, can you bring Mr. Myers over again and see if we have, oh, Mr. Quinn, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I unmute myself there. To Mr. Cohen's point about, before, about members of the board reading Mr. Myers' memo, which I, or statement. I'm concerned with the sort of eleventh-hour nature of his statement. And I just, I browsed it while we were having a connection problem with the other gentleman. And it struck me that there's a lot of, Mr. Meyer said he was a researcher. He didn't say that he was a legal researcher, and there seemed to be a lot of, he cites a lot of legal cases. I think as important for the board members to have read it is to know whether Mr. Regan has read it and whether it might be prudent if we are allowing this into testimony for us all to take some time. Read it. Have Mr. Regan take time and read it if he hasn't already done so. I know that this makes me very unpopular with my colleagues, because this will lengthen the meeting. But I think we're just in a bind here. I mean, it's something that, had we gotten even at three o'clock, you could make the argument that that would have been within the boards. Members of the board could have had that time to read it.
I agree, Tim. I think we should take a pause and let the attorney read it.
I'm assuming that Mr. Regan hasn't, since it wasn't-
I have not read it. I've quickly gone through it. I have to be honest with you that I don't know that I'm in a position to respond point by point to to Mr. Myers' memo. It's 16 pages. Quite frankly, I'd have to have, you know, one of my associates do some research to confirm, you know, a number of the cases cited. I mean, I hate to say that, but I think that the paramount question for the board is whether or not they feel, you know, it's important for the board to, you know, to make a decision whether, you know, they want to take the time to review this, you want to have me review it, you want to discuss it, whether you think it has, you know, a substantial bearing on your decision, because quite frankly, your decision this evening, you know, is really based on the evidence that has been submitted by Ms. Mertz in her report and in her testimony. And ultimately, you need to make the determination whether you feel that, you know, that substantial evidence has been provided to you for you to conclude that the properties meet criteria D and that these factors, that is, the factors under the criteria, you know, are detrimental to the safety, health, morals, and welfare of the community. I mean, that's your determination based on the evidence. You know, you have to decide whether you think Mr. Myers' memo is going to somehow influence your decision. I can't speak to that at the moment.
So isn't the memo, though, part of the evidence that the board is supposed to consider in making that determination?
If you choose to consider it, correct.
Tim, this is the question I had, and I have a different comment for later, but for right now, just kind of on your point. Mr. Regan, like, is it? I mean, there's not a lot of time for us to review it and to understand it, but there is theoretically time for the council to get a legal opinion based on it. Like, is it? Could we, you know, could we make a determination tonight, but encourage the council to review the information before they make their determination?
Well, it's part of, it is part of the public record. So there's no question that it is, you know, it is part of the record that the council can consider if you were to make a recommendation to them that the area meets the criteria, because that's really what your determination is this evening, is, you know, based on the evidence that was presented. Do you believe that the properties meet that criteria and you can make that recommendation to the governing body?
Mr. Cohen? I'm sorry, Mr. Regan. Go ahead. And you wanted to finish your thought.
The last thing I wanted to say was, you know, Mr. Myers raises, you know, constitutional arguments. And obviously, at the end of the day, the redevelopment law is underpinning, or is the state constitution. And there's an obligation based on your review and recommendations, and ultimately, the governing body, that it is in compliance with, you know, with the constitution. But, you know, your determination is not, I don't believe your determination is, at this hearing, is whether it's constitutional or not. You're looking at the specific criteria to determine whether these properties meet that criteria, and you can make a recommendation that the area qualifies as an area in need of zoning. So I'll stop there.
David?
Madam Chair, well, can I?
Well, David, Mr. McGowan, David Cohen has had his hand up for quite some time, and maybe you have too, and I'm just not being very good tonight about hearing. But let him go first, and then you can say your piece, okay?
Okay. So, yeah, what I wanted to say was that I think Jeff's suggestion is a good one. I think that there are basically two points in Mr. Myers' letter, from what I was able to glean from a brief review. One being, you know, does it meet the criteria? And he seems to feel like it doesn't because of this question of blight, which I'll speak to in a minute. But the second question is, should it be designated as an area in need if it does meet the criteria? And that is really, that is council's decision. So I think that it's real appropriate for this board to suggest that council, you know, review the document more closely, in particular, to reach a conclusion on that second question as to whether it should be designated. This board is only recommending that we deem it meets the criteria, but we're not recommending, I don't think we should be recommending, that it actually be designated.
Alvin?
Yeah. Procedurally, this is getting really confusing. Are we still in public comment? It looks to me like there's still someone else that wants to speak, and we've sort of-
Well, the person whose hand is raised is Mr. Myers, Peter Myers, who has spoken already for nearly 10 minutes. And it is Mr. Myers, oh, Michael Floyd just raised his hand, too. It is Mr. Myers who wrote the statement that we're talking about now. And, but we have not, Mr. Galston, who we couldn't hear from before, has not rejoined the meeting as far as I can, as far as I can tell. If he has, I don't think that he's raised his hand again, so we might have lost him.
Well, Mr. Myers has had his opportunities, and he's had his opportunities.
He has had his opportunity.
And we've also have his, now we have his memo, and I'm going to tell you, I'm very uncomfortable with trying to, you know, with the arguments that are being made here, if we have to make some decision on that. I'm very uncomfortable to doing that tonight. But more, at this moment, Mr. Myers has had his opportunity. We still seem to be in public comment, and it's starting, you know, I'm just worried, it's getting, now it's going to get unwelded. We're going to kind of be, you know, going back and forth, the public, and also having the members of the board commenting also at the same time, too.
You're right. And I'm sorry, I haven't kept it between the ditches better. I was keeping the public comment open, hoping that Mr. Galston might rejoin, but he has not. Mr. Myers has had his turn. Michael Floyd has now raised his hand, so I'd like for us to bring Mr. Floyd over to hear his public comment. And then after that, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will finish discussing this and and vote on it one way or the other, probably. Mr. Floyd, welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Regan will need to swear you in.
You just raise your right hand. Do you swear that any testimony you might provide will be the truth?
Yes, I do. Just briefly, because I I read the memo maybe about an hour before your meeting. Surprised that, you know, how much it resembles a legal memo. And it's not just constitutionality in there. For those who haven't read it, it does say you haven't met, you know, the redevelopment law, the criteria. So those arguments, I agree with Mr. Quinn. You have to consider that, and I agree with some comments about you need some feedback from your attorney. Because it's as close as a legal brief, you know, for 14 pages, so. You know, I just wanted to say that and encourage you to, basically, you got to propose, postpone this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Floyd. So seeing no other hands raised, I'm technically formally closing the public hearing portion of the meeting. So let's, Mr. Cohen, I see your hand raised again, and then I'll want to hear other people's thoughts to folks who haven't yet spoken your minds. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, I agree that with the point in Mr. Myers' letter, that we need to carefully consider whether these properties meet the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment, that it shouldn't just be sort of a rubber stamp of the consultant's findings. But I don't think that we need to get more of a legal opinion, because I think the surface language of criterion D is quite clear. The word blight is completely subjective and was removed from the redevelopment statute almost 30 years ago. And, you know, we have to be able to rely on that. As a board, we should not have to postpone or flail because, you know, a non-lawyer thinks that that language shouldn't have been changed 30 years ago. You know, I think that we should just look at the plain language of criterion D, see if these properties meet the criterion of D, and then pass it on to council with Jeffrey's recommendation that council review the portions of the letter that go to the second point of whether or not the area should be designated once it's determined that it meets the criteria. And I just want to say, I already said why I thought the parking lot meets the criteria. The criterion, I hope everybody else agrees that those existing structures are dilapidated. The fact that their square footage is, you know, at least 20, 25% below the standard, the current standards for the size of affordable housing units in and of itself makes them obsolete and detrimental to the health and welfare of the occupants of those units. So in my mind, all three lots very clearly meet the criteria, and I'll be interested to hear what the other board members have to say.
Other board members, Jeffrey, I see your hand is, your hand is raised. Maybe you never lowered it from before. And Alvin, also, yours is raised. Jeffrey, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I did have a comment that I wanted to add, and I think, well, I think Mr. Cohen just made a lot of the same points that I would. I think certainly, I mean, I agree that we need to sort of proceed with our discussion of whether we think that this, you know, these lots, you know, meet the criteria. And I think to that point, you know, on the parking lot piece, I think David definitely said it much better than I could have, but I, you know, agree that it's, you know, the fact that there's many parking needed in the area is not really what's at question. The question is the obsolescence of this facility for that parking, and I think that that's, you know, I found that compelling, but I think even more compelling is the question around the existing housing, because I think, you know, as was noted in the report, I mean, you know, and David said you're talking about something being detrimental to the health and safety of the community. I think the report was pretty clear in showing that those units are detrimental to the health and safety of those people who occupy them. And, you know, as David said, and I think, you know, the reference to, you know, HMFA standards for square footage of what they're not willing to even fund the renovation of units of this size. I think that's compelling. I mean, affordable housing is a public good, but not necessarily affordable housing that's in an obsolete condition. So the only thing I would add to that is that I, you know, I've had the opportunity in the past to be involved in a couple of projects where we've tried to take units like these and renovate them, you know, add square footage so they meet the code, renovate them to a standard that's appropriate. And it's A, extremely difficult, B, extremely expensive, and C, you know, the outcome is still not necessarily a great one for the tenants. And so, you know, if the alternative on the table is that this is zoned for and determined as being a place for newly constructed, up-to-code affordable housing units, more of them, in fact, than exist there today. I don't see how we can say that that's not, I mean, you know, maybe in a legal sense, it's harder to say, but in a practical sense, that seems to be the definition of an area in need of redevelopment to me. So that's the way I feel about it.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan? And then Mr. Taylor?
Well, two things. One, it seems to be, you could probably sever the parking lot off from the buildings and say that the parking lot doesn't meet, in itself, doesn't meet the criteria. But be that as it may, I mean, I'm not really, that's not really going to be the focus of my argument. What I think here is, again, I want to hear from my attorney. That's who we rely on, or the law. To what degree does blight at this point matter? And that's where we're going to get our legal advice from. I know he said it already, but I just want to again confirm. He said that that's no longer a much of a criteria at all for determining.
I mean, the issue of blight, it's not the board's, the law doesn't require the board, and ultimately, a governing body, to determine, make a determination of blight. Your determination is based on the criteria that is set forth in the redevelopment law. And in this instance, there's the D criteria, which is what the planner has based their conclusion on. Another point I wanted to make is it's not this board's role, I don't believe. Uh, another point I wanted to make is it's not this board's role, I don't believe, to make a constitutional determination of whether redevelopment or redevelopment area, um, you know, is, is valid. I mean, ultimately, your job is to rely on the criteria, you know, to apply the criteria that is set forth in the redevelopment law um, based on the evidence that's been presented by the planner and the planner's report and, and decide whether you agree.
He froze.
He froze.
I thought it was just a dramatic pause.
Oh, dear.
Frank has us on the edge of our seats.
More technical issues tonight than usual. Hmm.
John had his hand up. Maybe he could go while we're waiting for Frank.
Yes.
And, and hopefully this time technically I can be heard for the first time.
There you are. Frank is back.
Well, my, 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 my perspective reads as follows. First of all, based upon the presentation from the consultant, as well as the discussion today, to, to thus far, it's compellingly clear to me that we should approve the redevelopment proposition that is before us. The issue that we're facing at the moment is not so much, maybe not at all, the substance of the letter that's been submitted. The issue is if we were to approve based on everything but the letter, the redevelopment proposition. And subsequently, we were asked by the council or the public to explain why we received a 16-page document presented in good faith by a neighbor without reading it and discussing it is an appropriate exercise of our right and responsibility. And so to me, it's not the substance per se at this stage, but whether or not we're really faced or not with an obligation to read a document like this somehow before we make our final decision. And if we don't, how will the town council or the public view our decision not to look at the letter appropriately? And it's not alone a question of council looking. It's a question of each of us looking at the letter and making whatever judgment is appropriate. So that, that's, that's how I see it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sacks. Um, without getting into whether we should or should not read the letter in this particular instance, I'm concerned about the larger issue of um, members of the public being able to um, interfere in a counterproductive way potentially. And I'm not saying that at all that that's what this is, but I, I'm concerned about a situation developing in which in future hearings, anyone can submit a large body of work at the last minute and then uh, you know, sort of turn our hearing uh, into a, a, you know, a um, create a level of um, chaos in, in our hearing and, and um, I, I'm just, I think this is, it really, we, we need to get some clarity about this seems to, I don't recall, and I've been on the planning board for a long time. I don't recall this situation having ever occurred, but I could see that there are people who would want to interfere and, and, and it does happen, you want to interfere in hearings. And so, you know, going forward, if people start dropping off large bodies of work that have a legal sounding tinge to them um, right before the hearing, I, I get a pattern of, of disruption that would be very unfortunate. And I, I just, I think that's also an issue that we need to, I hope we can get some clarity from our attorney tonight or from our regular attorney in, in how to handle this.
Uh, Michael, I see your hand, but Julie and Owen and David have raised their hands even before you. So I'm gonna um, I'm gonna ask Julie and then Owen and then David and then Michael.
Uh, thanks, Louise. Um, I felt that Frank um, helped us understand uh, the gist of the letter and as far as the constitutionality of using blight or not blight, I feel is not under our purview. So I just wanted to go back to what David and Jeff were saying about how um, they feel, and I feel too, that the criterion D was appropriate and that it was carefully considered and that not only is the size of the housing um, part of the health and safety component, but also the lack of stormwater management and the um, the, a huge amount of impervious coverage of the parking lot that's not being um, this is just basically not the right shape. Um, so I, I'm, I feel confident that criterion D has been met on all three lots.
Thank you. Owen?
Okay, um, there are usually rules about when evidence can be introduced and it has to be posted publicly on the website. Um, and I don't know if this letter in particular qualifies as evidence per se. But yeah, I didn't receive this letter until after the meeting had started. So how can I be expected to make, to take this as a a document that I'm expected to be fully informed on. And I agree with Mia that, you know, this is the second time in the past few meetings that we've had, we're basically account to objectors evidence uh, being dropped on us. You know, shortly before the meeting and, you know, without, as far as I know, they're being posted on our website as is normally required. Um, so I don't, I don't know if the rules are different for a redevelopment hearing as opposed to a site plan review. Uh, perhaps Frank can, can qualify that, but I just don't see how we can even take this, take this letter into consideration at this point. Um.
Well, I, I'll ask uh, Frank to opine. I do want to also point out that um, the gentleman who wrote the letter, I've already forgotten his name. Was it Mr. Myers? Sorry. Um, did, did address the board for almost 10 minutes. So we did hear, hear testimony uh, from him, even though um, you know, most of us have not uh, read, much less digested um, his letter uh, or statement. Mr. Regan, can you?
I, I, I think I indicated this earlier. The redevelopment law does allow for the submission of written objections. Obviously, the circumstances have changed in the last 18 months in terms of uh, having virtual meetings, um, which makes it challenging. Um, may, or maybe in some instances, it makes it easier to share that kind of information. Um, but ultimately, it's the board's determination um, to weigh, you know, any evidence that is submitted, whether it's orally or in, in writing. Um, you know, as, as part of your deliberations. Obviously, you can set the ground rules um, with respect to, to submission of, of written documentation. Um, generally, you know, a, a, in, in the redevelopment context, I have been involved in situations, you know, where there were objectors and they've submitted written planners' reports and so on. Generally, that's done in advance of the hearing for purposes of giving the board and, and the board members, uh, you know, opportunities to, to review it. Um, you know, I, I've, I've, I haven't read through Mr. Myers um, you know, long letter uh, line by line. Um, but I think a, a number of members have said this. Um, I think ultimately his conclusion is that he does not agree. In his opinion, he does not believe that the properties qualify as an area in need of redevelopment. So that's ultimately his opinion. He's raised constitutional issues, which again, I don't believe it's, it's this board's responsibility to determine um, you know, whether a redevelopment area designation uh, is constitutional. That's not, that's not within, you know, your authority. Uh, it's not what the redevelopment law contemplates. Um, what, what the redevelopment law contemplates is that you make your decision based on the evidence that is presented um, to you as part of this public hearing. And that evidence consists of the, the planner's report, the planner's testimony, the comments uh, of the public, written, whether oral or written. Um, and you need to make the determination of whether you think you need to read that entire letter, uh, and that's going to change your decision um, or not.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, you had your hand up uh, before. Did you want to?
You made the point I was going to make, that we already heard from Mr. Myers verbally as well. So I don't think we uh, need to give too much weight to the concern about procedural propriety, not having had a chance to read the letter.
Yeah.
Mr. Qu- oh, I see your, um, I was about to call on you because I saw your yellow.
The halo go on. Uh, I do think though that Councilwoman Sacks's point is well taken about us setting boundaries for what can and can not be considered. And um, you know, clearly something that's presented to board members during a meeting. Uh, I, I think we should just say it's, it's not germane and it's not reviewable because that goes back to my original question to Mr. Regan. It's not practical for us in the middle of a hearing unless we were to extend our five-minute break. Um, it's just not practical. So I, you know, I, I think it's something for this board to consider setting formal limits that, so that if this happens again, we can say we've been down this road and here's the policy that we decided was going to be the board practice.
Yeah.
And one last comment, if I might, I, you know, uh, just along those lines, you know, um, and, and it's been stated, I mean, Mr. Myers was given the opportunity to, to speak orally. So, you know, and many times written comments are submitted because someone can't attend a meeting. And I think that may have been partly why he submitted those, because he wasn't sure if he could make it to the meeting. Um, you know, it's part of the public record. Um, it will continue to be part of the public record. Um, and, and, and again, he was given the opportunity to, to speak, you know, at the hearing. So I, I think, I think you, you have sufficient, you've sufficiently heard his concerns and comments um, in a sufficient amount to, you know, to make a decision.
And I think we've also agreed in conversation that should there be any problem afterwards in the public context, that we can live with it, that we're justified, as you just suggested, in making the decision that that's before us. And I think the, the suggestion that we have guidelines going forward is entirely appropriate. I think we're ready. I think we're ready to vote.
So any members of the board uh, have anything to add before someone offers up a motion? I, I haven't weighed in myself. I do find the arguments um, in favor of um, determining that these parcels qualify uh, under criterion D to be very compelling. I mean, I, I think when you, I, at one point pulled up the um, the language again to look at by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, light and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, deleterious land use or obsolete layout, any combination of these or other factors are detrimental to safety, health, morals and welfare. I, I, I think singly and um, uh, of a piece, they are um, completely within that definition. And so I, I'm, I'm very comfortable um, with that recommendation to council. Uh, my personal opinion. So uh, I see everybody's uh, got their mute on. Almost everyone has their mute on. If there are any other final comments or someone would like to make a motion, I think now is the time to do that. Zenon, I saw you.
I was just gonna make a motion. Should get this over with.
Go ahead, Zenon.
Yeah, that's it. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to um, designate it.
I think the motion would be to recommend to the governing body
Right, 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 right.
that property qualifies as an area in need of redevelopment.
Correct. What, what you said.
Meets the requirements for, yes. So it was moved by Mr. Texarney and seconded by Mr. Oakman. David, did you have anything else to say?
Well, I just wanted to get a sense in the board if um, they would be amenable to a friendly amendment that we also recommend council, that uh, council review the letter and um, see if it has any bearing on their decision to actually designate.
I think that's wise. Mr. Texarney and Mr. Oakman, is that all right with you?
Sure.
May, may, may offer another friendly, friendly amendment?
Go ahead, Mr. McGowan.
That, that, this, that the criteria is met under section D. Specify the section, the criterion is just specify the, you know, the criterion that you use to make the determination. Add D, criterion D to it. That's it.
Is that, that all right with you, Zenon and Jeffrey?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Uh, yes. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, everybody. Let's take a 10-minute break and then come back and look at uh, two ordinance referrals.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
See you at 9:45.
Good night, all. Thanks.
Oh, thank you, Frank. Yes, good night. Welcome back. Um, so we have two ordinance referrals from council. Um, the first is ordinance number 2021 colon 31. The Hun School Campus Rezoning. This is a rezoning of block 9303, lot 1, and block 8203, lot 11. Michael?
Uh, thank you, Chair Wilson. Um, this ordinance, this draft ordinance has a little bit of a history. The planning board heard a presentation by the Hun School of Princeton um, back in December of 2019. And it was uh, about the request to take two parcels, two uh, properties, the block and lots that, that the chair just mentioned, uh, which are already in use by the school and are contiguous to the campus. And I'll talk about that in a second. And um, move them from their current zoning, which is R2 residential in the old township ordinance uh, code to um, E4, which is educational use. And that's the zoning for the remainder and, and the bulk of the campus of the Hun School Campus. Um, as I alluded to, these, these parcels, one of which is um, the site of Mason House, which was formerly the headmaster's home. Um, is currently, um, it, it received a temporary variance from the zoning board that runs through this December. And um, a little bit of background on that is um, the school received a gift of a new house um, not far from the main campus in the same neighborhood, um, a gift to the Johnson family. And that's the new headmaster's home. So Mason House was no longer needed as a home for the headmaster. And um, the campus uh, kind of at the same time with the pandemic, um, and the national health emergency, the school um, came to the town and explained that there was this tremendous need for, for an upgraded healthcare center on campus. Uh, you know, to be able to take care of students and, and, and address the needs um, by the, from their, you know, address the, the and 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 address the needs by the from their, you know, address the the challenges of the health emergency. And basically, Mason House itself was not conducive to being used as an infirmary. But if offices and academic support uses could be moved to Mason House, then it would free up space elsewhere on campus to do the kind of health facilities that are that was needed by the school during this difficult time. So at first administratively, because of the health emergency, we agreed to allow that change to happen. And then it was formalized by this application to the zoning board and a granting of a temporary use variance. So right now Mason House, the former headmaster's house, is used for academic support administrative offices. And what the other parcel that was mentioned as part of this application is known as the mall or the commons. And it's a lateral, a long.
We lost your audio, Michael. Michael, we lost your audio.
I'm sorry. It's a tradition with me, isn't it? The two proposals basically are the site of Mason House would be to put make permanent the non-residential use. Because before it was in the R two, it was it's now in the R two zone. It was used as a headmaster's home. And then the use at putting the the mall, the long linear open space parcel into the E four zone would grant the campus a little bit more FAR floor area ratio to make some needed improvements to existing buildings around campus in terms of access and ADA accessibility and and improvements like that. So it seems like to the school, very practical change because these parcels are already pretty much in use by the school. And what I wanted to note is that when this was presented earlier to the planning board, the planning board did make a unanimous proposal endorsement of this zoning change and sent it back to the council for consideration. So now it's back before you to consider whether it's consistent with the goals and objectives of the master plan. And some of my thoughts on that are as follows. The the proposed zoning map change would basically these are the two parcels, if you can see on the screen, the long north-south vertical one is that area of the mall, which is at the center of that block. And then towards the the bottom, the other hatched area is the site of Mason House. Those are the two lots that are proposed to go from R two to E four. The thought is that these these lots are somewhat, they're contiguous to the existing campus. So they don't really constitute an aggressive expansion of non-residential use into the neighborhood. Because the mall would be put into deed restricted open space in perpetuity, that would add to open space preservation efforts for the for the municipality. And there's also a goal in the master plan about being supportive of cultural and educational institutions and a mix of land uses in the in the municipality. So I think it it hits on those goals that are stated in the master plan.
Okay. Let me move this over so I can see more people. Are there any questions that folks have for Michael or for Jerry? I mean, I I recall the last time we were looking at Hun School and we knew that the headmaster was going to be moving into the Johnson House, which, if you're looking at that map, is on a lot that stretches from road to road. I can't, I can't see the road names on my screen. It's too small. I'm sorry. But there are, but my point being that between the now president's house and the
This is Johnson House here.
The Johnson House and the property they and where the Mason House is, which they want rezoned, there are those four residential lots. And I'm wondering whether anyone at the Hun School has, first of all, is anyone from the Hun School here to talk about this at all? I guess not. Have they made clear to anyone as far as, as you know, Michael? I guess whether they want or intend at some point to sort of purchase those four lots and ha and sort of extend their property all the way to the president's house or or is that just a complete unknown? I I don't think it's completely irrelevant to this conversation, but if other board members feel that it is, I'm I'm happy to let it go. I just, it was the first thing that popped in my mind once I, you know, realized that there's these these lots that are now sort of surrounded by effectively surrounded by the school.
In the discussions that we've had with the Hun School and in the materials that they've presented to staff in the board, they've always maintained that these two lots, these two properties in question are already functionally a part of the campus. So I think that's probably what we can focus on. That this is only about these two parcels that are already functionally a part of the campus. I think that implies that other lots that are not currently in use by the by the school would not be in play in terms of campus expansion. I mean, that's sort of what I took away from those discussions.
Okay. The other comments or questions from board members?
Are we sure there's no one else here to talk about?
You know, I haven't, I haven't asked members of the public if, let me.
Well, I just want to make sure the this Hun School doesn't have a representative. I thought there would be somebody. Okay.
So if there are no questions from board members, I will. Oh, sorry, Mr. O'Donnell and.
Okay, it's not really a question. I just want to point out that in the resolution itself on the first page, the fifth whereas, it gives a date of what was it, December, December twelfth, two thousand twenty? And that should be two thousand nineteen, I believe, according to Michael's memo.
Right, that was, that was the initial presentation before the planning board. And the other date is the, the, just so you know, FYI, the the temporary variance runs through December of this year, two thousand twenty-one.
Right, but that date.
But it should be edited.
On the resolution.
It should be edited in the resolution and made part of our recommendation. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for that, Owen. There are no other comments or questions or anything from board members. I'll ask or invite members of the public if there's anybody who wants to weigh in on this one way or the other or has comments or information to share, to please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any hands raising over in the attendees.
We have eight members of the public in attendance.
And and no one raising their hand to speak. Okay, so so then I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion.
I guess I move that this ordinance is consistent with the goals of the master plan and should be passed on to council.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan.
How often with the recommendation that the council adopt the ordinance?
Well, that, yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Right. And I guess with that one change in the fifth whereas clause, it's of the, it's actually actually part of the ordinance itself where the date will be changed, where you recommend the date be changed from December twelfth, two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. McGowan moved, Mr. O'Donnell seconded. Carrie, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Oakman, he let me know he had to drop off. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. The next ordinance is number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine for stormwater management. This is stormwater management regulation for redevelopment. And I know we have, I noticed Jim Purcell just turned on his camera and and Derek Bridger. And so, Michael, do you want to start us off and set the table or are we going straight to Mr. Purcell?
Well, as much as I want to support my colleague, Mr. Purcell, I am not the expert on this particular subject. But this is definitely a major initiative that 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 our land use engineer slash assistant municipal engineer has worked very hard on. So you'll hear about it in a moment from him. But it is an update of our stormwater management regulations and honestly, I can't do it justice. So I think I will let Jim sort of give you a little overview of of why it's before you now, what the purpose and intent is. And 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 perhaps others can also talk about that are involved with its review can talk about its status at this point in time.
And I'll just add that the probably Jim would have started with this, but the Flood and Storm Water Commission has been looking carefully at this with a ton of support from staff. And so it really has gotten a very thorough going over. And Zenon and David and I are all active on that Flood and Storm Water Commission. So so Jim, you're up.
Well, now I don't know how to start. Just you just took away the intro.
Just fast forward to.
Jim, take a bow.
I think we can start by swearing you in, right?
Yes.
Great way to start. Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Jim, doesn't have to be sworn in because this is not.
I didn't think so.
Okay.
Not testifying on it.
It was an excellent thought, though.
My apologies, Madam Chair.
No problem. I I I'm not going to let Michael give me that much credit. The the credit really does go to the Flood and Storm Water Committee for working so diligently on this proposed redevelopment ordinance, which I'll describe in a couple of minutes. But it has been many, many months of of work and back and forth. The ordinance, I will tell you that in in its format has been reviewed by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for consistency with NJDEP rules. And they had a single comment. And I will touch on that comment in in a couple of minutes. Let me just start off by describing to the board what what changes are proposed. We currently have a stormwater management ordinance that was passed and went into effect in March of this year. That stormwater management ordinance requires that stormwater management systems be implemented onsite for major and minor developments and defines major and minor developments in that ordinance as major developments being additional impervious area of greater than five thousand square feet or the disturbance of existing ground greater than one quarter acre, one half acre. A minor development is considered any project that would increase impervious area by more than four hundred square feet. And that most of those require that we create we create stormwater management systems that control quantity, quality and recharge of of groundwater from stormwater falling on the site. So that we are reducing the amount of runoff from the site. We are increasing the quality of the runoff that does leave the site and that we are contributing to groundwater recharge. There are provisions in the current ordinance that allow for variances to be granted, and I use that term purposely because we we have a waiver provision in the ordinances that the requirements are waived for certain linear development projects. But any deviation from the water quality, water quantity and recharge requirements require the planning board to grant variances. And so those are distinct from zoning variances, but that is the term used by both the DEP and in our current ordinance.
Jim, can I interrupt you for for just one second?
For sure.
For some folks on the planning board might not be familiar with the term linear development. I know I wasn't for the first year that I worked on stormwater stuff ages ago. It's basically a road project, am I right?
It roads, railroads, pathways, long linear developments like like those things. Yes. So they're they're they can, they can be granted waivers from our our requirements. So there is a distinction from a legal standpoint. So that we have the difference between a variance and a waiver in there. Variances are from the strict requirements that are stated in the ordinance for the amount of quantity that has to be reduced, the quality requirements and the recharge requirements. So the current ordinance only deals with net new impervious areas. If a development comes in and increases the amount of impervious area on a site, they must provide stormwater management on site. Much of Princeton is already developed. And what we have found is that developments on currently developed sites are not being required to provide any stormwater management because they are not increasing net impervious areas. So this new ordinance, this this proposed, these proposed amendments will include new definitions for the term redevelopment, replacement and routine maintenance or adding those to it. We're updating the definition of a regulated impervious surface so that it will include disturbed existing impervious surfaces. We're also changing the definition slightly of a major development and a minor development to include in the definition that major development will include redevelopment, which results in either the disturbance of one half or more acres of land or an increase or replacement of impervious surfaces. Both of those both of those terms will be in the major and minor development definitions. Minor development means any development, including redevelopment, which results in an increase or replacement of four hundred or more square feet of impervious surface. In addition, we're adding in what was missing from and and is included or not, I'm sorry, it wasn't, it wasn't quite missing. It was in the wrong place in the definition of major development. We're rearranging it to say that a separate sentence that now says the amount of disturbance and impervious coverage shall be measured on a cumulative basis since February second, two thousand four. That is consistent with the New Jersey DEP regulations. We are adding that to the minor development. The minor development definition at this time, too, because it was not. We are adding a look back provision in the minor development. I I'm, I think I better stop here and say that the minor development provisions that we and definition that we came up with or in our current ordinance were not a requirement of NJDEP. So that is where we've already gone above and beyond what was required by New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. What was missing from our minor development definition was that we didn't have a similar provision that said that the amount of disturbance was cumulative. So we are adding that in to say the amount of disturbance or impervious surface shall be measured on a cumulative basis since June twelfth, two thousand seventeen. We're allowed to go back to two thousand four and required to go back to two thousand four because of New Jersey state statutes and DEP regulations. For minor development, we've chosen June twelfth, two thousand seventeen because it is the date when the stormwater management requirements were first implemented here in Princeton. uh, requirements were first implemented here in Princeton through ordinance. So we are, we are looking back there. Um, as an aside, we are also adding that provision into our definition of small and large projects, which are the single family and two-family homes. Um, that, the purpose of that is because we discovered that there was a loophole whereby applicants could come in and be under the threshold with an application. And within a couple of months, or even a couple of weeks, come in with another application under the threshold. Combined, they would be above the threshold, but still not required to provide any stormwater management. Um, so we needed to make sure that we were considering that for cumulative. So that's also included in this ordinance change. Um, any questions at that point before I, I, I'm afraid I'm getting made way too technical. I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole.
It, it's a lot. Um, is there a um, um, like one oh one example of um, meaning a simple example of a a redevelopment project where you can say, here, here's how, here's what would be allowed under our current ordinance for a redevelopment project, meaning no stormwater, I assume, no stormwater management required at all versus what the stormwater management on that site might look like? I mean, ha, I guess I'm asking to, to translate it into something that we.
You really want an example?
Would expect to, would expect to potentially look at. And if that's, if that seems like a curveball.
It's not a, it's, it's not a curveball, but I will say, and I see Mr. Cohen has his hand up. Um, I will say that every project is unique. And so to provide you with an example that really shows this is really difficult. Plus, the ordinance is written in such a way that it states that you, you have to meet these requirements to the greatest extent practicable. And in a lot of cases, that means just doing the most that you can do. Um, and, and, and showing that we've done everything that we can practical, practically do, not practical. Um, and, and that it's just not possible to meet the requirements. And I will, I will give an example, you, this board just approved ten acre foundations uh, um, site plan. They were not able to meet our current ordinance. And you granted variances on that current ordinance because they did everything that they could to your satisfaction, that it was to the greatest extent practicable. And that's really kind of what we're looking at. Um, it will become more difficult to meet the requirements as we go into the built environment in the downtown business district.
Yeah.
And, and we will have to be flexible. But if we do not start doing something, um, and now I'm moving into philosophy, not sure, instead of engineering. Um, we need to do everything possible and use every tool that's available to us to mitigate runoff and reduce flooding downstream in our residential neighborhoods that are experiencing the brunt of the runoff from our developed areas. And um, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent confident until I see a, a site plan that I can review. I'm not a hundred percent confident that any project within the central business district will actually be able to meet the strict requirements, hence the reason for the greatest extent practicable. And I'm going to let Councilman Cohen speak now because his hand's still up in the air.
David?
Well, I wa- I was actually just gonna offer an example. Uh, when the shopping center redid their parking lot uh, six or eight years ago, if this ordinance had been in place, they would have been required to do some significant stormwater management improvements. Uh, as it was, because they weren't in, increasing their impervious coverage, they were not required to do anything. Um, so that's an example. Uh, it's hard to say what it would have looked like had they been required to do something because uh, there are a lot of ways to skin a cat, I think. But I, I just wanted to offer that as, as an example.
And I suppose I could offer another example, although uh, a, a, and an example where the requirement doesn't even exist, but we're, we're actually working with a developer to do something more. And that is the one that you reviewed last, last week. The um, the Avalon uh, project at the shopping center, where they are in compliance with the requirements, but have agreed to try to do more. Um, we, and we have, we, we can't require them to. And one of the reasons we can't require them to is because it's a residential development. Um, so I, I, let me explain that as well. That residential developments are not subject to our more strict requirements in our current reg- um, regulations or even in our proposed ones. If it's a residential development, they fall under the residential site improvement standards requirements, which revert, revert to NJDEP current regulations. So they only have to meet the NJDEP regulations. And as I said, our current ordinance is stricter than that. And our redevelopment ordinance will be even more strict. But residential developments do not have to comply. David?
Yeah, and so on that note, I wanted to make a comment about um, consistency with the master plan. Uh, because I just went and took a quick look at the green building and environmental sustainability element, which we recently adopted. And this, this um, ordinance is specifically mentioned under the water section, item number five, as a goal of the green building environmental sustainability element is to extend stormwater management to redevelopment projects. So uh, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew. Um, it's about as, as clear cut as you can get. And the, the exception for residential uh, projects that Jim just mentioned should alleviate any concern. You know, earlier this evening, we were hearing discussion about how affordable housing is inherently beneficial use and, and our master plan really encourages that as well, lest anybody on the board be concerned that this could have a damp, damping effect on development of resident, of, of, of affordable housing because of the added difficulty of, of meeting these stormwater requirements. You should not worry about that being a conflict with the master plan because those projects are exempted.
Yeah, and I, I would just add that um, you know, while Princeton I think should be commended for going above and beyond the bare minimum required by the state of New Jersey, um, which is not as low a standard as it used to be, but not a particularly high standard uh, compared with a lot of other um, especially uh, urban jurisdictions around the country. Um, we're not the Lone Ranger. You know, there are a, a, a number of other towns that are going in the same direction and um, and smaller and larger cities that um, are, you know, figuring out how to make this work. Uh, and as Jim started to say, when he was gonna get on a soapbox and then climbed down before he even got all the way up. If we, if we don't address existing runoff, or, or, you know, runoff from our built area, we will never come close to addressing the um, water pollution and flood problems that are um, you know, contributed to by having so much impervious cover. And, and by raising the bar, we're not necessarily making it really difficult for people to um, meet the standard. But it does require a different skillset. And so it'll be incumbent on, on Jim and the folks in his office. Um, and uh, you know, others may be consultants of ours and, and all to help developers understand how they can meet this standard. Um, because a, a lot of engineers in New Jersey are really good at green infrastructure installations and, and have great skills and others, you know, not so much. Um, and the developers, you know, are going to work oftentimes with the engineers they've partnered with for a long, long time. And so it's sort of, you know, sometimes the luck of the draw, whether they've are working with folks who really are, are high skilled. Now, that's not to say that there aren't, you know, if there are concerns that are being raised, we do need to be able to provide alternative projects, alternative ways for developers to meet some stormwater management obligation if they're being given a waiver or variance. And maybe, Jim, you want to talk a little bit about that? It's something that's come up at the Flood and Stormwater Commission meetings a good bit, the importance of um, creating, developing and adopting a stormwater mitigation plan.
Right.
So that we have specific projects that we can either ask developers to build or to contribute to if they can't meet um, a requirement and uh, and need a um, I guess a variance as opposed to a waiver. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
I, a, a little bit, only because it's not part of this ordinance. That, that is the next step of the Flood and Stormwater, uh, you know, if it were part of this ordinance, it might actually be more palatable to uh, the developers who are objecting to it. Um, because then they could have a, we, we would have a, a bank, uh, an infrastructure bank, if you will, to use to develop our own stormwater mitigation offsite somewhere. Um, we have, we, the Flood and Stormwater Committee is just starting to look at that. Um, but that's, I, I'm, I mean, I've, I've heard terms of bare bones, but even bare bones is uh, is complicated because we have to, mitigation has to be done in the same watershed. Um, mitigation uh, has to, has to be uh, able to be quantified and um, cost estimated. And the cost of it has to be fairly distributed amongst uh, amongst the community. Um, you know, we can't hit one developer with the entire cost of a mitigation project. Or we, we'd have to decide that your amount of stormwater would have cost X, so you have to contribute X. And then we have to create a stormwater mitigation that costs X um, in order to, to make sure that it's fair and equitable. So there's a, I think there's a lot of work, even if we were to do a bare bones mitigation. Um, so that, most, mostly because of equity um, issues. But we, we do need to go there because we need to start use, as I said at the beginning, using every tool that's available to us in the toolbox.
Right, and I, I I climbed up on a soapbox and I'm, I hope I didn't cross a line, but I
No, no, no.
Sort of bring us back to the.
I, I don't want this to become a Flood and Stormwater Committee meeting.
Where's our, our soapbox is so high that we're out of the floodwaters. Um, the, the matter before us is, is about consistency with the master plan. And David read, you know, from page eleven, which I also have in front of me. It's the, this concept um, is mentioned repeatedly in the green building environmental sustain- sustainability element. Um, so I really don't think there's any question that it's consistent with the master plan. Um, but, I mean, do other folks have thoughts to share, questions, concerns? Uh, et cetera, before I invite people from the public who may want to speak?
What, what I'm not clear about, if I may, what, what in, what is missing from the toolbox? You've been dealing with that, but with all the progress that's being made in this ordinance, what is your priority of missing pieces of the toolbox?
Um, available land for stormwater mitigation.
Available land, okay.
For mitigation, for those.
For mitigation.
That.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, you know, a, aside from this redevelopment ordinance, um, I mean, getting, getting the ordinance in place in the first place that we currently have was step one. This is, this is another step in the process. But um, we're trying to do it to balance the ability of development to continue while that development can help to contribute to mitigation. But the major mitigation piece has to be something that the municipality enters into. And we do it through land acquisition and creating um, stormwater facilities that are going to mitigate flooding downstream. Um, and getting DEP out of our way. Sorry.
Go ahead and say that on.
Public, did I?
Mr. Cohen?
I was gonna say it if you didn't, Jim. Um, no, but I, I do think that there is um, hope for solving that problem that Jim is talking about, the finding land, places to put uh, these public mitigation projects. One piece of it is the concept of um, really acquiring properties that are currently built on, but that are being flooded so often that they should not be. Because if the municipality can buy those properties, take down the houses or whatever, whatever's there, uh, we can then do nice with, you know, these are ideal locations for uh, stormwater mitigation because we know that's where the water's going. And um, the other potential, um, and this relates to Jim's comment about the DEP. Um, a lot of our parks um, are in semi-low lying locations and are ideal uh, for green infrastructure projects. Um, they were, most of them acquired with Green Acres money. And DEP is currently interpreting the Green Acres regulations such that we can't do stormwater management in these locations. But um, we're working to advocate on the state level to see if we can get a different interpretation or, or a rule change. Because I think the, the way the rules read, uh, it's old fashioned gray stormwater management that they're concerned about in parks uh, disrupting and taking away from the, the park-like character of those spaces. Green infrastructure should be very supportive of the character, you know, that we want in our open space. So I'm, I'm hoping that if that conversation can be had, we can make those spaces available. And, and many of them are ideal for mitigation projects.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that um, sometimes parks and public spaces um, that are completely um, paved, covered with, with pavers and, or nearly completely covered with pavers and other hardscaping um, double as flood mitigation and stormwater management features with, with um, really, really powerful public benefits. And those are more often found in downtowns. Um, uh, the Resiliency Park in Hoboken uh, is in a lot of people's presentations. If you go to redevelopment conferences or stormwater meetings or whatever, but um, but uh, Philadelphia has them and, and they're in, you know, much smaller cities and, and towns as well. So can be green area, it can be um, public plaza type areas that just have a lot of, you know, reservoirs and tree trenches and tree pits and other things that soak up water.
Hey, so um, if I might, may, um, so with this, this new ordinance, I guess, um, you know, the idea is to pass it. And then in the future, once we have a, a stormwater mitigation plan, the ordinance will be amended to essentially allow for developers to kind of pay out of their responsibility potentially into a fund. Is that, is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's, that's, that's.
The idea.
The current thinking, I, I, you know. The current thinking, I, I, you know, I, I can't predict what we're going to do a couple of years from now. But
Good. I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I feel like this
Sort of like that, let me, Zenon, if I can interrupt, sort of like the Shade Tree Fund? Or, 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 or redevelopment, our redevelopment fund for housing? When, when, when we have multiple unit housing, they pay into. So something like that, or we are looking at a stormwater utility. So that may take the place of even a, a mitigation bank. If we establish a stormwater utility for Princeton, then we will be collecting money from, as, in, in terms of the fee from every property owner.
Right, well, I mean, it could potentially be both because, you know, the utility is something that is ongoing that you get a fee from all, all people who contribute to stormwater. And, and a fund could be something that, you know, redevelopment, redevelopment pays into essentially. So hopefully we'll have a nice treasure chest of funds to be able to do all this work and, and solve the problem.
I don't want, I don't want a treasure chest. I want to be able, I want, I want money that gets spent.
Yeah, yeah, the idea is to, to spend it and fix the problem. So I, I, I'm, I'm all for that. I mean, I think that it's great that Princeton's moving in that direction. I think that that's, you know, the direction that many municipalities should be moving in. The one, one thing that I'm kind of potentially concerned about and, you know, I, I guess, I've, I've heard from some, some people in the community is whether or not, you know, this ordinance by essentially kind of making all development kind of comply with this, this ordinance, you know, whether it could potentially tie development up in, in legal battles with people that are opposed to, to development, just in general. And I don't know if you, you can speak to that or if that's more of an, an issue for a lawyer. Does it, does that make sense?
I think it's more an issue for the lawyer, but the bonus falls on the planning board.
Right.
Or the zoning, or the zoning board to, to decide whether or not the developer has done what they can do to the greatest extent practicable.
So
Again, it, it doesn't apply to all projects because
Right.
Because residential projects are exempt by virtue of the residential site improvement standards. So, and for the others, it's just, you know, do, do what you can do. Stormwater planners, permeable pavement, tree trench, green roof, you know, little bitty swale. I mean, all that, or, you know, a little patio that's got a little reservoir underneath and an underdrain. There's a lot of ways that, in fact, one of the projects we saw not long ago on the Griggs Corner parcel, they had, you know, quite a few green infrastructure best management practices sprinkled around that site. And I don't know whether they'd have met the standard that is set in this ordinance. But they'd have probably come pretty close and, you know, maybe could have done a little more here that, I don't know. But that, my point being, A, that it doesn't apply to absolutely everyone, plus it was residential. So they wouldn't have had to anyway. And B, there are a lot of ways that you can soak up water even on an already built site.
Is that on, were you, one of the things you were getting at was sort of the general, like, what impact will it have generally on downtown in the central business district? Because it's already very built up and, you know, some of the goals of the master plan are to encourage investment and growth of the central business district. And, you know, would this possibly be a damper on that? Is that sort of what you were raising?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that that might be one kind of thing that I'm potentially concerned about. But, you know, others are just kind of, whether or not, you know, our decision could be then litigated or, you know, because it's, it's a variance and it's kind of open to interpretation. Like whether, whether, you know, you know, these types of decisions could be kind of held up and potentially stifle, you know, good development. I mean, what I'm kind of questioning is whether or not, like, you know, the planning, if the planning board's decision is kind of, you know, the, the decision that matters and, you know, it's up to our discretion to kind of make, give that variance. Or if, if it becomes like sort of, you know, an, an MB tool essentially to, to prevent development.
Yeah, staff was chatting about this earlier and we were thinking of examples that how it would have, might have applied to, for instance, something like 20 Nassau Street, the new hotel, would that have, you know, objectors to that? Would this have been a tool that, who knows, you know, it would have been interesting. I think the, when I first came on council, I was advised, you can't worry about litigation when you're making decisions because there are litigants on both sides. So, you know, as much as the folks you've talked to, Zenon, might be concerned that development opponents would sue to overturn planning board decisions that granted waivers. There are groups out there who really want to manage stormwater, who might litigate if we didn't do, you know, di- didn't do the best practices in this regard. So you really just have to do what you think is the right thing and deal with the lawsuits as they come, which they certainly will. Well, aside from law, lawsuits, we've heard from some developers who said that this might be a deterrent to wanting to invest in Princeton. Have you heard much feedback from the business community? David or anyone?
Mia? Yeah, I, I just want to say, and I, I know that's a leading question, so I'm going to take the bait, Michael, that, you know, everybody on this call and, and, you know, is, and, and myself included are all strong supporters of stormwater management and have background in various capacities in, in advocacy for environmental sustainability. So you wouldn't know on this call that this ordinance has raised a, a tremendous amount of anxiety and, and real concern among a wide swath of the architects, planners, attorneys, developers, builders, pretty much everybody who's involved with the, the built environment in Princeton. And unfortunately, none of them, this was, I, and it was my understanding as well that this was not going to be on the agenda tonight. So I think nobody showed up tonight to talk about it. But, you know, there has been an ongoing conversation this week. Council has really been, you know, our, our ear has really been bent by, by people who, and, and I, the part that I am most sympathetic to are the people who I have tremendous respect for, who have said that this categorically will make smart growth impossible in Princeton and that it will end the very type of growth that we think is the most environmentally sustainable form of growth, which is building transit oriented development in our core. And that it will actually incentivize the development that we don't want because it makes it easier and cheaper and less with fewer obstacles, which is building everywhere that we don't want on, on green fields and, and and in, in the periphery. So I don't really know what the answer is, but I will say that we had a very lengthy and heated call with our staff and with council members and with just a small sampling of the different groups that I just referenced. And I, I don't, you know, as I said in the introduction to the meeting, the commission that's been working on the ordinance says that it's, does everything wonderful and has, you know, and in terms of the fears that other groups are expressing, that it's completely benign in those respects. You know, you do what, it's sort of a, you know, you do what you can. And if you can't, you can't. And so, you know, and in the meeting I said, what I'm hearing, you know, from, and from others, I'm hearing that it would be the end of any of the sort of, you know, building in our affordable housing overlays, the mixed use, uh, growth that we've been working so hard to incentivize. So what I said is you can't, you know, the two sides are so far apart, you can't both be right. There has to be
They not recognizing that it doesn't apply to residential well, project?
They were not realizing that. And once it was explained to them, the temperature went, in the room went way, way, way down.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that I concur with that assessment. I think that we were able to clarify that it doesn't apply to, to projects that are, you know, subject to RSIS standards. But there were a lot of questions about, you know, how you calculate in, in development where there's, it's, it's mixed use and so you have residential and mixed use. But I think more than that, what, what concern about was what Jim is, and what Jim is saying is, you know, look, he will evaluate and you do the best you can. And the contention that we received back is that for a very long time, Princeton has, because our code is so complicated, people are, who are working to, to build things in Princeton have heard from our staff, well, you know, we, we have to funnel that up to council because for whatever reason, it, it requires an administrative waiver. Or so what they're, that, what they're concerned about is building into the ordinance something that is less dependent on having a sane staff person who is responsible for granting the administrative waiver and for something that is, that is more easily quantifiable. And so anyway, I'm feel, just because there's nobody else here representing that point of view, that I need to let you all know that had they known this meeting was going to be to, tonight, there would be many people you all know well, who would have been here tonight speaking. And we did hear from them earlier in the week, so I just wanted to, you know, I did feel
Well, it was, never, never not going to be on the agenda as far as I know, but Madam Chair, if, if I could For, yes, Mr. Quinn?
If I could suggest that we're at 20 minutes until our stop and there, there are members of the public in attendance who might want to comment on this.
Thank you for that.
Good, bad or indifferent, then I think we should afford them ample opportunity to have their three minutes each.
Thank you. So, members of the public who would like to speak, please virtually raise your hand. I see one individual already has done so. Move your cursor to the bottom of your screen and click on raise hand. So I'm seeing an individual, well, we have eight people attending. I'm seeing an individual named Paul who has his hand raised. Carrie, can you bring that person over? And anybody else who, who would like to speak, please, please raise your hand now. So that we have a sense of how many folks might be weighing in here. So Paul, if you could unmute yourself and turn on your camera. I would appreciate that. And then Mr. Muller can swear you in. Or, or maybe he won't. Jerry, you're on mute. I guess he's saying he won't swear you in.
Right, that's exactly right. This is not a, a hearing where witnesses have to be sworn in.
Okay, well, we should hear, we should, we should get your first and last name, please.
Paul Schorr.
And would you spell your last name?
S C H O R R.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Well, I, I support the idea of increased stormwater management wholeheartedly. I wanted to address some of the issues that I heard spoken of earlier and bring to bear some of the experience I've had of working in that illustrious agency, DEP, for 40 years. And then in consulting engineering for 10, and now as a professor at, adjunct professor at NJIT. So the, the concept of litigation and problems that you have and writing in enforceable and visually equitable ordinance, I think, is warranted. The way we had to address that back in the seventies, when we had issues related to septic tanks and 49 units for subdivision, and people came in with 48. Eventually, we began to realize that the ordinances that we had or the regulations we had had to be more visual and easily interpretable by everybody. And that was where the concept of testing and wet pits and other things came about, made it very simple for, to see whether or not something was working. So I'm going to just generally recommend that whatever ordinance you have with respect to green infrastructure, you test it. Put a hose on it. See if it works. So that's one thing. And you can do that, you've got a lot of the data already in your ordinance about at least the ones that I looked at. I will look at 2020-39 and 2020-38. So I'm not sure I had an opportunity to review the ordinance that was specific to the discussion tonight. But firstly, then, then the second thing about development downtown, we live on Harry's Brook. So we get the stormwater impact of runoff from the downtown area. And I can remember in the seventies and the eighties, we worked on the Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority because it was getting overwhelmed with excess water. Because at that time, the sewer system in Princeton was a combined sewer system, which meant that sewage as well as stormwater was mixed together and was all going to the Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority, which was getting overwhelmed and they had to revert to, to, to divert it into the stream. So now that's changed. So the, the low hanging fruit, which was separating of the combined sewers into a separate storm sewer and a regular sanitary sewer, was worked on for 20 years and has helped manage both downtown and other areas so that they're cleaner and less polluted. But that, so I'm pointing out just that the low hanging fruit has helped development because the sewage treatment plan now works better, the storm drainage system works better. And proposals that you're hearing will, may, will even improve that further. Now, whether or not it's going to be marginally improvement or hugely improvement, I don't know. Then the last thing I wanted to say is that the discussion on recharge has to become really important because the, the stormwater either has to be stored or diverted. And one of the places that it can be stored is in the ground. So recharge is really important. And whether it's through green infrastructure or through other types of, of in, infrastructure, I don't know. But I think you're on the right track. And then lastly, I'm sorry, I said almost lastly, let's take a look at Quaker Road. As an emergency exit out of Princeton or Rosedale, wow, it got overwhelmed. And if we look at the future of how storm events will actually become greater, potentially greater and more frequent, the stormwater management that we're contemplating may not be enough. Especially if Quaker Road remains out of, out of whack for a long time. And that, that was an interesting, the, the configuration of Quaker Road, Stony Brook, the DNR Canal is very similar to what we're seeing on Harry's Brook.
Mr. Mr. Shore, I don't mean to, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure we're able to hear from everyone. So to, to summarize, are you supportive of the I thought I heard you say that early on.
Yes, yes, I'm supportive. And I think you have to do more and you have to think about it as the events have demanded us to think about Quaker Road.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Thanks very much. I knew I recognized your name.
Okay, we have another individual, another individual who needs to speak, who would like to speak, and that's Mike Pissaro.
Okay, great. Bring him over. Thanks again, Ms. Shore. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, thank you very much for this opportunity, my name is Mike Passaro, I'm the Policy Director for the Watershed Institute. Uh, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of what's been said, this is obviously extremely consistent with the town's master plan. And it's, it's very important, you know, as Jim mentioned, you know, a lot of the town developed before there was stormwater management. Uh, so you have areas of the town that have uncontrolled stormwater. And obviously, I don't have to talk to you about, you know, the flooding issues, not even from extreme storms, but just from normal storms that. The town and surrounding areas are experiencing. And, you know, add to the fact that ninety percent or more of our waters in New Jersey, including those in the Princeton area, are impaired. And a, a significant portion of that is because of the way we manage stormwater. And so this redevelopment ordinance takes an opportunity to address, you know, something that we allowed. Before there was management because we didn't know better or it wasn't an issue. And take the opportunity during the redevelopment process to incorporate protections. With those protections though, I think is very important, and I know that the, the flood committee is looking at it and. Wants to move as quickly as possible for mitigation opportunities. Cause there will be opportunities, will be instances where you cannot do everything you should do or, you know, would need to do. Uh, in the redevelopment, and so providing those relief valves are important. You know, when we were here back in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, talking about our enhanced stormwater management. You know, we talked about those relief valves being necessary and important, and we, you know, continue to support that, to provide those opportunities. You know, there are cities throughout the country that are doing redevelopment with stormwater management, uh, you know, Philadelphia and DC. Um, you know, there was, um, an engineer, I think, was from Elizabeth saying, you know, like, my ordinance doesn't require it, but our sewer systems, which are combined. Uh, can't handle more, so I require it because there's nowhere else for the water to go without having that management. Uh, so I think this is important, I think this is an important tool in the toolkit. To move forward as we experience climate change, that is only, only going to get worse and it's going to continue to increase. Both volume and intensity of storms, so starting to chip away at that, I think is important. So again, I appreciate this opportunity, I appreciate all the hard work that the staff has done to get us to this point. Uh, and, you know, the continuing conversations to address those concerns from, uh, the community. Uh, so that we have an orange that works and, you know, actually improves things for Princeton, I think is important, so I thank you. And, uh, I do support, uh, moving forward with this, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Passaro. Um, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, uh, so last call for that. And I'm still not seeing any hands raised, so with that, I will, um. Close the public portion, uh, of the meeting, we'll come. Back any, any final questions or comments or concerns from board members, or would someone? Like to make a motion one way or the other?
I'll just say real quickly, I mean, don't get me wrong, I, I, um. You know, fully support this, this ordinance and, and I understand, um. You know, that, that there are concerns, but, um, I, I, I think that I agree with David. Um, I, I think that we, we should just, you know, sometimes we don't know the effects and, um, we sometimes just have to try things. And, uh, you know, if it doesn't work, if it seems like it's, it's a big problem, um, then, you know, you, you change it, so. I think that, um, you know, I'm sure that this is going to be discussed further and, and, you know, they'll, they'll hash things out later, but I mean, I think that as far as. It being consistent with the master plan and, um, you know, certainly the, the environmental commission is in support of this, this ordinance. So, um, I think, I think, uh, it is in conformance or consistent with the master plan, so.
So is that a motion, if I hearing you, uh. Make a motion, or would you?
I'll move to. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
And your motion is to find, um, that the board finds that this is consistent with the master plan and recommends adoption by council? Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I will second, although I'd also like to correct the record, I'm not sure I said. You know, just pass it and if it's wrong, we'll fix it later, um. If anyone else heard me say that, but.
No, no, what I heard you say is that, you know, people will. A- argue about it from both sides and that you can't make up your mind based on, um, a, a concern about litigation, that, that's what I heard you say.
And that's right in the money, I mean, you, you could say that about virtually anything that comes before the board. Um, and if, if that was one of the governing considerations, we, we, we'd be.
Paralyzed.
Especially in this town.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we have a motion and a second, um, Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
This Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan? He must have left.
Yeah.
When that happened, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Of course, Mr. Ockman had left, uh, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
I'm gonna say that, yes, I do believe the ordinance is consistent with the master plan, but I also do believe that there's more work that needs to be done on the. On the ordinance, and I strongly believe that we need to pair it with the mitigation plan. As soon as possible because the ordinance without a mitigation plan is, um, really just a very small piece of this, so yes.
So Mia, that's, you, you're gonna vote against the, the motion, is that?
No, I'm voting yes, that I agree this is consistent with the master plan, but I'm just adding that I feel.
It should be paired with a mitigation plan.
And that more.
As possible.
And that more work needs to be done, but we can address that when it comes to council.
Was a robust yes.
Nice. Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes, and I, and I agree with Mia, I think, you know, it, it does, should be paired with a mitigation plan ultimately, so, yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, and I also agree with Mia Sax's comments. Needs to be done.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes. I understand, thank you, Carrie, I, I understand it may be a while before. Counsel acts on this, I do hope that the ordinance stays as is and that the important. Other work with the mitigation plan and, and other resources for developers and engineers. So that we provide as much clarity and support as we possibly can to help them meet. Uh, the standard and that may, and to make it clear and predictable. Um, i- is really important, so I mean, I, I certainly take that to heart, Mr. Le Place?
Um, Chair, what we'll do is when we communicate formally back to the council on this action, we'll also note. The concern about pairing the ordinance with a mitigation plan.
Good, thank you. Okay, um, any other business? David?
I move we adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you, everybody, thanks.
Wait, we're journeying with four minutes until eleven, come on. Turn the recording off, Carrie.